Do so before you leave. If you want to ask a question, grab a number from our great team back there. We do things very orderly here at the JSQCA. Obviously, everyone has an opinion. My opinion is no better than yours and vice versa, so we have a lot of information to get out there. This is the big community meeting for this information, so if you're going to ask a question, please be brief and concise and ask one. And if we have time at the end, which I doubt we will, we'll get to another question. All right? All right. So Mayor, thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
Obviously, it's a very important project, not only for Journal Square but for the city. And I can tell you that we surveyed our membership about the project, and it wasn't so much a pro or a con against the project, but 73% of the people who answered were dissatisfied with the lack of transparency, so we appreciate your coming here today to dissolve that. There's misinformation out there, there's lack of information, so if you can gear the presentation towards that, we appreciate it.
Yep.
And I don't like this number, but 69% of the people who responded said they didn't think their input would matter, so we're going to change that today. If you have an opinion, please feel free to share it. And of course, if you have an opinion between now and next Wednesday, share it with your councilperson. And I see Councilperson Gilmore here, I don't see any other... Oh, people... Your friend's area, Navy Dejez, thank you for joining us. And Councilman Bojjan on the back, thank you. All right. So Mayor, turn it over to you.
All right, so let's have some introductions here to start. Do you want to introduce yourself?
My name is Joe Baumann. I have a law firm, McManaman Scotland and Baumann. I spent about the last four years of my career doing redevelopment projects, complex projects, projects similar to this that we've done in our firm, anything from, if you think about the Red Bull Stadium or The Rock. So our firm has an area of expertise in this sort of complex projects that requires, takes many years, a lot of stakeholders, and I'm chairman of the firm again, I've been doing it about four years. Joe Baumann.
My name is Mike Hanley. I am a principal at NW Financial. We've worked with the city and its colleagues within the state since 1996.
I'm Jason Long. I'm an architect and partner at OMA, the architecture firm that's been working with the city since the beginning, first imagine what could happen to the pathside building and then since the Pompidou has come on board and the design of that project and also the future. Thank you.
And Stephen Pullup, Mayor of Jersey City. First, I want to say thank you to Tom and the Journal Square Community Association. I would tell you that I sincerely thought that we would have even a larger crowd than this, a much larger crowd, and I'm encouraged that all of you came out on a Saturday morning and are interested. My schedule is to be here as long as necessary. Answer any question you have and make sure that some of the miscommunication or misunderstanding is cleared up. And whether you agree or you don't agree with our opinion, we will provide facts and we will address misinformation. I do think that seeing some of the familiar faces and communications we've had over the time, if somebody says something that is disingenuous or dishonest, I will correct that because I think that's fair and I see some conversation could go in that direction. I want to nip that in the bud, so I want to be upfront about the fact that I view this as a conversation back and forth. I'm going to start also by saying that in 18 years, city council in eight, or 19 years, 11 years of being mayor, and the first three terms elected mayor in 70 years, and most of the time, people tell you that just don't rock the boat, don't make change, keep things status quo, you will get reelected. Because every time you engage in something, you get these sort of conversations and you open the opportunity for naysayers. We're all familiar with a lot of each other in this room here, and there are some people that I think is fair to say that support me from 2013 and much of the ideas that I propose always are there as supportive. There are also people in this room that oppose everything that I do regardless of what I say, and I see some of those faces here. And then there's some people in this room that are genuinely here to ask questions, and I want to speak to those people most about what we are trying to do here. I will tell you that in 19, 18, 19 years, this is the first meeting that I've come to with a truck outside like that. Okay? Now, why do I point that out? Okay? Because it's important to recognize that when we talk about the finances here and how it's structured and the small amount relative to the impact it will have on you as we outline that, okay? And all of the things that we deal with day in and day out on the city council, dealing with hundreds of millions of dollars and projects of massive size, that somebody thinks it's worthwhile for them to spend money and hire an expensive truck to be outside of this specific project, so you have to ask what the motive is. And as I think as we get through some of these things, we're going to address some of that stuff because there's a lot of misinformation and there's a lot of ulterior motives. I want to read something to start, okay, because I think it's really, really important. Okay? So if you indulge me for two minutes, okay? When the project was first proposed, there was community opposition, as is common with large development projects. Concerns were mainly centered around the potential displacement of residents, the cost of the project, and whether it would genuinely benefit the local community, especially in the city, a city that has long faced economic challenges. Many community members worried that the Art Center would cater more to wealthy patrons from outside the city rather than serving the local population. There were also questions about the use of public funds for the project, especially given the city's financial struggles at the time. Some feared it would divert resources from other pressing needs in the city. However, the project's proponents, including state and local officials, argued that the project would be a catalyst by attracting visitors, creating jobs, and fostering cultural growth. Over time, the project became a symbol of the city's resurgence and has since played a significant role in the city's redevelopment. In the end, while there was initial resistance, the center has been largely embraced as a positive force for both the arts, for the community, and the city's broader revitalization efforts. A lot of what we're talking about over here is, you're like, who wrote that? Are we talking about this specific room and this conversation and all of that? I want to plug in one word that I took out, okay? Because I think it's really, really important to have a broader conversation, so I'm going to change the one word, okay, where I said "center," okay? When the New Jersey PAC was first proposed, there was community opposition, as is common with large development projects. Concerns were mainly centered around the potential displacement of residents, the cost of the project, and whether it would genuinely benefit the local community, especially in the city of Newark, a city that has long faced economic challenges. Many community members worried that the NJ PAC Art Center would cater more to wealthy patrons from outside the city rather than serving the local population. There were also questions about the use of public funds in the project, especially given the city's financial struggles at the time. Some feared it would divert resources from other pressing needs in the city. However, the project's proponents, including state and local officials, argued that the project would be a catalyst for economic revitalization in Newark by attracting visitors, creating jobs, and fostering cultural growth. Over time, the project became a symbol of Newark's resurgence and has since played a significant role in Newark's redevelopment. In the end, while there was initial resistance, the NJ PAC Center has been largely embraced as a positive force for the arts, for the community, and the city's broader revitalization. Now, I share that with you because that is a synopsis of 1990s, okay? And when I had NJ.com in my office, Josh was a part of that conversation three days ago. The first thing Margaret Schmidt, who's the editor, asked me, the first thing, correct me if I'm wrong, she said, "Why are you still pushing this project?" Just fill me in on that, right? It was a conversation, it wasn't argumentative, okay? She was curious, okay? And I said the following, you correct me if I'm wrong. I said to her, "You are correct, Margaret. We've worked on this since 2019. We have six pages of community meetings that many of you were a part of, robust conversations with a lot of people individually. We heard your personal objectives, your personal opposition on why. We talked through about the importance of community involvement." And then, all of a sudden, the governor, who's a partner in this, pivots in March and takes away the state funds, which was vital for this. So at that moment in time, right? At that moment in time, I was technically off the hook. I didn't kill the project. We did everything we can to see something global in the city that is special for this city come here at that moment in time. And I am done with it. The governor did something to us collectively, and it wasn't my fault. So anybody who said it's not coming here, it didn't work out, nobody in the city blamed me. There was plenty of articles about that, okay? And I said, "For me to revisit this, I have to be one of two things. I have to be stupid," which maybe I am, okay? "Or I have to, in my heart, believe that this will be a great thing for the city." It's one of those two things, oh, only, that's it, okay? And so I am running for governor, you all know that, okay? I have all the downside in the world by engaging in this conversation politically. I don't need to do it, okay? I could have just said, "We're fine, we're totally good. Nobody's asking for this in a room that I thought would be bigger." But nobody's, and social media, you see the opposition, I could have walked away from it. But I brought it back because I believe that, in my heart, in five years and 10 years and 20 years and 30 years, this conversation will be so irrelevant and that will be so significant that somebody in Patterson or Trenton or Camden will read about this the same way that I'm telling you about what happened at NJ PAC. Now, well, I got one person in mind. It's okay, it's okay. I love the city like you guys love the city, and I want the best for the city, and I'm raising my family in the city. And I know that at the end of the facts as they're laid out, there isn't much room to argue if this is a good thing or a bad thing for the city. It is not much room around that. You may have personal reasons, which I've heard from many people in private, why they feel a certain way. It could be political, it could be personal regards to their nonprofit, that they feel that they may lose money personally on this. Those are fair, I'm not going to argue those points, but those are personal. If you believe in the future of Jersey City, it is very hard, based on the economics, to argue that this is not a good thing on how it is structured today. So I am going to open the conversation to literally anywhere you want to go. Budgets, timelines, why now, why urgency, what it will look like, community centers, how we section these off, it doesn't matter. We've put a lot of time into this and we have answers for all of that stuff because we wouldn't enter into something if we didn't feel comfortable on that. So there's no script, and like I said, I'm here to three, four, five, whatever you want. So the last person loses, okay? That's the way I look at it. So we're going to turn it over to Tom, and you take the questions where you go. I will correct misinformation, which I think is fair, but other than that, any question, go with it.
Mayor, I'll start with what the plan is.
Okay. How many people here saw the presentation at the city council or have some familiarity with it? Okay, so let's do it this way. So I didn't know, as a starting point, whether that is... Can we bring this easel out? Is the presentation on the board? How do we want to do that? Kristy?
It's right here.
All right. Okay. 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 In 2018, the city bought roughly $10 million, the pathside building across the street. I had a conversation with Tom Dejez at the time, who was a partner in this, who sold it to us at a relative discount without going to the market, and I said that with all of the things happening in Jersey City, that we should have an amazing cultural institution that also highlights all of the great things that are happening here. And at the time, there were skeptics on whether we could do this, okay? And we went out and we purchased the building, and then we hired some of the best professionals in the world, literally the best professionals in the world in this space to solicit a partner. And I didn't know, but I felt at the time that we have a story to tell in Jersey City that if somebody were to step foot in the city, they would understand how special it is. And the geography and proximity to New York, the biggest media market in the world, we had a story to tell that was special. I know a lot of people live in this city historically, we have a little bit of a chip on our shoulder, we live in the shadow of New York City, but I believe that we should have great things in this city ourselves. So I said, "We are going to find a world-class partner." We went out there and we found the Sandra Pompidou. For those of you that don't know what it is, it is the largest collection of modern art in all of Europe, the peer of the MoMA, as a matter of fact. There's one in Brussels, Abu Dhabi, Shanghai, Paris, and they decided that their North American location, after lots of visits, would be in Jersey City because they fell in love with this place the same way. And they said that this is a special opportunity. Now, it is important to recognize that also, we collectively made a little bit of a mistake at the beginning because we allowed it to be portrayed as a museum, okay? And we said, "Museum, museum, museum." That is not what they are in Paris, that is not what they are anywhere else in the world, and that is not how they embrace the community here. In Paris, it is an extension of the library, the national library system. If you go into it, they pride themselves on being a cultural institution, multimedia centers, after-school programs, major, major speakers coming there and convening on an ongoing basis. The displaying of artwork is a very, very small part of what they view their core mission to be, okay? They came here and they understood immediately that they said, "Look, we are not going to come to Jersey City and hang picassos on the world and think on the wall and think that we are better than what's happening across the river." It's a silly thing for us to think they could do it, of course, if they wanted to, but they didn't view it that way. They spent years spending time in the community with many people over here, building relationships, okay? Asking about how to build the fabric here, how to make it better than what is, how to enhance the existing cultural community. Six pages of meetings. We have two people here from them, and you could hear later today, they're sitting in the front row because they do view this as important today, so correct me if I'm saying anything wrong, okay? So we go through this process, and the pathside building was a tremendously expensive project. It was an expensive project because it was a retrofitted project. It was an old building. I liked it because I thought it had a very special character to it. So I thought that it was worthwhile to kind of lean into this because it had a special character. But at the same time, it was very expensive to fit out. It was very expensive, like fitting out an old home. If you build a new house, it is more cost-effective than fitting out a historic home. So we had a lot of problems on the pathside building. We had elevator shafts we had to move, we had stairs, we had fire suppression, we had to redo the roof, but we were making it work because it had bone structure that was really terrific, it had high enough ceilings to make it work, and it was okay. And the way that was structured at the time was that we collectively worked with the state to get an EDA grant to fund part of the project, that could be anywhere up to $70 million, and that would have gone to capital in addition to the fact that the state had appropriated, which you have read, roughly $48 million. They took away the $48 million. The EDA stuff is still there because that was legislatively done, okay? So now we had a problem. We had a problem of a massive funding gap, and like I said, I could have walked away from it at the time. But the timing worked, that 808 Pavonia, which has been 10 years in the making, since I've been the mayor, that parking garage at 808 Pavonia has been a discussion about how to resolve the finances. 10 years. The Harwood's didn't want to separate from it, the father passed away, many of you know the history on that, okay? 10 years, they couldn't get to a resolution. As luck would have it, pure luck, in June, they get to a resolution, they get the finances, and the building is scheduled to move forward in September. The financing is done. It's a 60-story building coming with the density that was approved 12 years ago. Now, you might say to me, "I don't like that zoning, I don't like that height." We had nothing to do with it. It was the previous 2060 plan, and they are building by road. That building is coming, okay? But we started to think and say, "How can we work a little bit more and figure out, maybe salvage this project?" And that's where the conversation started around the pilots. That's where we are today. So you cannot wait indefinitely because there's financing issues, and if you lose this window of time, you lose the opportunity on the project because there's nowhere else there to put it. So that's the reason for the urgency, the timing, how it worked out. The MoMA across the river has residential on top. This is a model that is not abstract or weird or strange. It is something that works perfectly well elsewhere in the world. And the beauty of this is that it's much cheaper and it doesn't cost you anything today. Most of it is deferred cost. What you are getting today, what you are getting today is 100,000 square feet of space in the heart of Journal Square. That is the conversation. If the Pompidou doesn't come, which we hope it does, because like I said, I believe it will be a huge asset, and they are here today. If they do not come, you, we own 100,000 square feet in the heart of Journal Square. By any metric, by the financial advisor that is sitting there, the exchange of dollars, net present value of what we are giving versus what we are receiving, we are ahead. It is hard to argue because there's no risk for us today. We are assuming 100,000 square feet in the heart of Journal Square. If you don't like the Pompidou, if you think the Pompidou will be gone in five years, in 10 years, which they won't, in 20 years, you still own 100,000 square feet in the heart of Journal Square that we collectively could never buy today. They are upfront paying $50 million to exchange all of the things that we need to make it work. The risk is on the developer in that front, and if we were to do it ourselves, you're looking at close to $90 million plus because we are not efficient in that space. That's just the reality of the world. This is the current location of the site that we're talking about, okay? Can everybody see this here? Easier for people. Okay. This, this is the 808 site, okay? Now, everybody can see the Lowe's Theater is here. We closed financing on the Lowe's a month ago. It was a 10-year project also. I started that in 2013. Renovations are happening now because it was maybe the most complicated project we have, but thankfully, that is moving, that is done. Lowe's here, you can see where the path is here, where the current tower of Journal Square is. So everybody has their bearing as far as geography goes. I'm going to show you another view of that real quick. I'm going to go through it and then I'm going to open it up. Like I said, I'm staying here as long as you need me. You'll have your time to ask questions. Okay. This is a blown-up version of what it looks like today. In the current schematic, this over here is an art walk that is already approved. The original design for 808 anticipated having an art walk that connected the Lowe's to Manah. That was the goal of it. Now, the Sandra Pompidou actually, as I said, pure luck in this situation, fits perfectly in the concept of an art walk. In the idea that you will come off the Journal Square path and actually walk through this area and have the Sandra Pompidou over there, and then continue down to Manah past the Lowe's. You can envision that it all fits perfectly together, but that wasn't the initial intent because we didn't anticipate. That part is pure luck. But from a geography standpoint, I want you to understand how it looks and how it complements each other. When you come off the path, this is the Lowe's Theater, can we all see that? This is the Lowe's Theater. This is the building that the city council has approved condemnation on, okay? We approved condemnation not because it's an eyesore, but because it is a construction risk, and we've worked with them for a long time, and it's a safety issue. If you are going to be having 3,000 people coming out of the Lowe's Theater after a performance, you cannot have this narrow alley walkway and think it's safe. So we started down the road and we are in condemnation on this to widen this up to a proper plaza, okay? See it? Yeah? Sorry, real quick clarification, that was a view from Kennedy?
Correct.
Correct. All right. How am I doing, architects? As you walk down the art walk, this is the building one, this is a gallery space that will be built as part of Gallery One that was already approved, that is required, that would already start the programming, and then as you're progressing down towards Tower Two, you will see this pink space. It's not scheduled to be pink, but this represents the first floors of the Sandra Pompidou or the 100,000 square feet that we are assuming. So you can see it from the art walk, we are coming down Kennedy Boulevard at this time towards Manah essentially, past 808 Pavonia. This is a total of a 45-second walk, okay? Continue. Okay. Gives you an idea of as you approach Tower Two. A lot of the cultural institutions in New York have grand staircases. These are four floors, roughly 100,000 square feet. Our previous pathside was roughly 75,000 square feet, so it's a larger space, and it's actually, I've seen some people writing emails that were forcing something into, say, "This is actually a much more flexible space, higher ceilings, open floor plans. It is much more conducive to what we are trying to do. It is actually a much better working space than what I said earlier with regards to the pathside." So this gives you a concept of how you are walking down, continuing towards Manah, but passing through the Sandra Pompidou there. Okay. This will be my last slide on this. Okay, so this gives you a little bit of an idea of kind of the space. Again, all in 100,000 square feet. There is two floors of gallery and then one floor of programming, and then parking underneath is included as well. I think roughly 300 spots? 300 spots for this, okay? Now, the thing about it is that there is a whole floor at minimum of community programming, of classrooms, because if you visit it in Paris, this is their core mission. Their core mission is being part of the community and education around that. Their core mission is not displaying artwork. Like I said, it is an extension of the library there. So that's the starting point. I guess we'll open up to questions. If we want to revisit that, we'll go to the experts here and they can talk in more detail on it.
Thanks, Mayor, for the slides. You mentioned the next big ticket item would be the project. So, and I'll look for correction if wrong, but our research shows that the Center Pompidou is a government-owned building and 68% subsidized by the French government. So can you go through what subsidies are available for this project here in Jersey City and what the budget looks like? And the biggest question is, which you answered privately, but within our emails, what's the cost of the taxpayer?
Yeah. Okay. So, great question, okay? When we looked at the budget, okay, and the proposed budget, we looked at the 20 most similar institutions of size and geography in the region of what we are trying to do here, okay? And almost all of them came back at a sub less than $20 million budget, and this was in conjunction with the governor's office at the time. So this is all of the programming operations, okay? Everything included. Now, the first lady at the time wanted us to build a surplus and make sure that we are extra conservative on that. So we modeled out at the time a $22 million budget, okay, to make sure that there was a little bit of flexibility. Today, the cost of the taxpayer is roughly $1.25 million, not a lot of money, and $2 million from the library on expanded services. Not a decrease, an expanded budget. So you're looking at relatively our budget, a very small amount. Where does the other dollars come from? Okay. We took the most conservative estimate of philanthropy from our professionals, and that equated to roughly $3 million. The biggest change on why it's economically viable today versus what it was not economically viable in the previous model without the governor's help was because that EDA grant that I told you about earlier that we were using for construction before, we're permitted to use that for operations now. So that carries the majority of the burden over the next 10 years. So we've modeled out the budget entirely for 10 years. On visitors, okay, because we had to hire for the state independent consultants to go through this, we took their conservative estimate of 300,000 people per year, okay? So everything in there is conservative and realistic because we wanted to make sure that it is a very, very limited cost to any of us. The benefits far outweigh that cost. We are not talking about huge dollars here relative to our budget, and that's why I first said that it is hard to fight this in the current operating budget because if you look at what we're spending on it and how it's modeled out and where the dollars are coming ultimately, it's a minimal impact to you, and we're getting 100,000 square feet in Journal Square. If you think about it from a trade standpoint, it's really hard to argue against it in that capacity. Next question. All right.
Could we just fact-check some of those budget numbers? Because I have a...
Okay. We provided, we provided it to the city council, we put it on paper, we will provide it to Tom Zupa today, and he can distribute it to everybody that's there.
I've got those numbers right here. Can I kind of report because they're... Can I kind of report because they're not what you just stated, Mr. Fulop?
That's not what we provided there. That is not the...
Now, this is directly transferred from what you provided to the city council. Can I read them?
Wait a second, Sam. I'm not gonna argue with you because I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna...
Because he's right!
Wait, let's not...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Sam, Sam, okay, okay. I, I, I'm gonna, because I can appreciate this, but I want it to be honest on people's... You transferred things and I have no idea what you transferred, but I will provide Tom our budget. Now, I will tell you, like, I get it. You have been critical from the beginning. I get it. Okay?
No, we're talking about the budget. We're talking about this one fact that you stated. I just want to refute that. I want to fact-check that one stat.
We will provide, we will provide you a 10-year budget. Hold on. We will provide you a 10-year budget. And if you put your email down here, you will have it...
It's disgraceful you've come here!
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're loving well Journal Square on this Saturday. All right. Okay, we love it.
I want to, okay, I want to be...
Go out first, please.
Mayor, if you just had a member that he has...
If you're able to correct that, Sam.
Hold on. Go ahead, Sam.
All right, I'm just, I received, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just pull this up. Excuse me, just take a second here.
From us, you received?
Yeah, I received this from a council person. This is the, this is the 10-year operating budget that was provided to them on, I believe, Monday of last week. You just stated that there was a city budget line item of $1 million.
1.25...
1.25 and you said there was...
The SID tax in it.
This is a, this is a, this is a photo of the budget that you provided.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that states that the city landlord operating contribution is 2.25.
Okay.
The library budget is 2. So that's a million more than we just... I just want to fact-check, okay?
Yeah, okay, so that is incorrect. We provided, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna answer your question. We provided a updated version that factors in the SID tax and in all of the questions that were provided to the city council members, there is a special improvement tax that is levied against the high-rise buildings in this building. And we've put a very conservative number in that of $1 million. And, and super conservative number on that. So when I said 1.25, it's a million dollars from the SID. It was provided to the city council members and $1 million on a tax from them, which could be higher. So in theory, you could have the, you could have the city portion even less if you raised the tax on the developers there.
So is that public information, what the current budget is? Because this is, this is as of what was provided, the city council understanding this is the latest.
No, that's incorrect. We provided an updated version and with the line item in the tax and we will provide it to you within two hours of leaving here.
That would be great. That would be great. Yeah, if we could get that information public.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing that you have there with a $1 million line item and special improvement tax.
Great, great. Let's, let's make that public.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. All right, we're, orderly fashion. If you want to talk, grab a number from Chris. Chris, raise your hand. Our vice president, doing a great job in the front. You have a question, take a number. All right. Everyone, you heard the mayor. He's gonna stay until all the questions are answered. One more for me and then I'll open up to our first number. Mayor, public transit around Journal Square is already a problem. NJ Transit can't seem to manage anything. And the path can't seem, Journal Script can't manage the load now. And we're grateful for the executive director of the path for joining us the last meeting. Has the city had any conversation? Or when will the city have conversations with PATH and NJ Transit about sustaining the Pompidou coming here or the cultural center opening up and Journal Square becoming a, quote, "tourist attraction"?
I think, I think that the first step is whether it is coming. But we are on, I mean, I speak to the path a lot. It is a point of frustration, obviously, with regards to how it routes on the weekends, how intermittent the, the trains are. We don't control that today. Right? And the Port Authority is important to recognize, is a reactionary agency. They react to issues. They are not a proactive agency, unfortunately. So they will respond accordingly as people are there. But the reality of the situation is that this conversation is about securing the space and then the next conversation is about, obviously, all of the other things that go with that.
All right. So I'm gonna open up to some questions now and I'll pepper in some other things that our board is talking about. Question number one, Deborah. No surprise there that Deborah's our number one question.
Yes.
Good afternoon. Good morning. And thank you all for coming. I'm gonna pivot because you kind of answered one of my questions.
Okay.
I, I received an email from one of the city council members that I wrote because I wrote all of them.
Great.
And, except for mine. And I wanted to know, in the email, she said that the building was granted or will be granted, was seeking a 30-year abatement. 30 years, folks! And 30% of that money was gonna be geared towards schools. Now, normally with abatements and pilots, that money is only shared between the city and the county. So how can you, what method or what, how are you going to assure that the schools are going to get?
Good question, Deborah.
That 30%? And your statement that taxpayers, it will only affect taxpayers by 1.25 million?
Right.
Well, the French Court of Auditors in April 2024 did an audit of the Centre Pompidou and said that their economic model is unsustainable due to their closure for five years to renovate that project and also to open a new project in Marseille, France. So I have a problem with the 1.25 million. If you want this and people want it, taxpayers shouldn't have to pay it. But also, why are they getting 30-year abatement? Which means I'll be 97 before anybody in that building starts paying property tax.
Okay.
I'll be 98.
Deborah, it's a, it's a good question. I always appreciate you reaching out and being proactive on that stuff. So first, important to kind of speak to kind of track record here. We haven't granted a tax abatement for seven years. It used to be by right and we have totally changed the model. Now, you hire as part of this process financial advisors to model out what the city's income is versus what the developer's income is to make sure that it is a fair exchange. And we have the financial advisor here. I'm gonna turn it over to him momentarily to speak to that. Okay? As he testified in front of the city council. The way that this is structured, and I started with kind of the NJ-PATH comparison because you could transplant in the Arena Newark, Liberty Science Center, the Camden Aquarium. They all have the same background and model. The objective here is that once we start this project, we put an independent board in place, similar to Liberty Science Center, and they are responsible. There is no responsibility to the city taxpayer beyond that. The board has the responsibility. We modeled out what the support is for that and that's where we are. Now, the financial issues in Paris, okay, and the Centre Pompidou is not going away in Paris.
No, I didn't say it was.
No, I know, I know, I know. I'm pointing to that because it's important, right? Is that, is that, it's unrelated to this? It's unrelated to Malaga? No, I mean, Malaga, for example, Spain, they just signed a new lease with them. Like, it's unrelated to this project.
Not necessarily because they're, they're gonna be looking for other sources for funding.
No.
So they could have sold you guys a bill of goods because I didn't find out about even the first project. You said you had a bunch of community meetings?
Yeah.
I'm usually plugged in. Never found out about it. And people I spoke to in my neighborhood, we didn't even know about this till we read about it either on social media or in the newspaper. So, and even the second one. You snuck it, tried to sneak it in instead of bringing it first before you even got into all this planning. And that's where a lot of the resentment is coming from.
Deborah, I...
Exactly. I'm, I'm resenting, but that's where a lot of your...
It's fine, it's fine. I appreciate that. We've been at this since 2019, okay? And, and there's been a lot of community meetings. And, and I could provide, I could, you may not have known, okay? And, but I could provide you the dates and the meetings of that.
I would like to know.
And the organizations on...
I've been to my first meeting meeting about this project almost four years ago.
Excuse me.
All right, all right, no back and forth. As Chris Lam says, the magic stick is the microphone. If you don't have it, please don't speak.
So the short answer is that there wouldn't be responsibility or risk. I think we've done a good job of eliminating that on the current structure.
Okay, and after the other thing about the 30% though, how are you gonna guarantee this school?
The council, the city council changed legislatively a couple of years ago that any tax abatement, the Board of Education is made in whole. So, so there would be no reduction to the Board of Education from what they would see in conventional taxes. First, they would see in pilot, the payment of taxes.
Right, but that, how, how, no, my question is, how are you gonna ensure that the Board of Ed is gonna get that 30% for the next 30 years?
Because it's legislatively done by the city council. We're obligated to do it.
Okay.
All right, who has question number two?
Just to be clear, it's two abatements, it's two separate towers, not just one. It's two separate towers.
Really?
Yeah.
It's one project.
That was not made clear.
Hold on, hold on, all right, all right. All right, who's got question number two? You have a little card that says two on it. If you want to ask a question, go to the front desk, please. And also sign up to get your email because the mayor's providing some more information after me. All right, two is gone. How about number three? Who has number three? Yes, sir.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm born and raised in Jersey City. I am a union member. My question is, as everybody is pertaining to financing, so under my understanding that the museum would be, you know, pro-union, what about the entire project? Why isn't it pro-union? Why isn't it, you know?
Yeah. It's a good question. The, the, could you hear the question in the back?
Yes.
Everybody heard it? It's a good question. The 100,000 square feet would be built out entirely with a PLA. The balance of the building would not be because there was no obligation on existing or prior zoning. As I touched earlier, all this stuff predates our administration. So when the existing zoning that was there did not have an affordable housing requirement, which was a mistake, okay? And didn't have a PLA requirement, which was a mistake. But there's no legal mechanism for the city to change that. The building that we're talking about, the building that we are talking about today, right? So if 50, 60-story building in the core of Journal Square was being and is being constructed regardless of this project, the pilot doesn't link to whether it comes or it doesn't come. So we've communicated to the pilots, I mean, to the, to the unions, is that we could guarantee a large piece of the build-out to be 100% union because we control that. And the developer has said they will work with them on the second tower. It's a two-tower project, one pilot, two towers, okay? In order to make that and explore how to make that maximum union possible. So that's kind of the backstory on that.
And just to follow up on that issue then. So the benefit to the city, you've made clear, the benefit to the developer would be obviously having a cultural center within their building to increase attraction, maybe raise rents. Why didn't the city, given that, the new benefit to the developer, why didn't the city try to negotiate either union work or more affordable housing?
We, I'll tell you, we always, first of all, we just worked with the community association here to expand affordable housing in the area. And we put the inclusionary zoning ordinance in place. We have an affordable housing navigator for the first time. The overlay zone. We built more affordable housing and it's still, we're swimming upstream than anybody else in New Jersey. Again, there is no requirement on that building to do this. So the choices that we basically have today are not whether we have so much leverage to say, I want this and this and this because the affordable housing component is extremely expensive to put into a building. That is extremely, extremely expensive. So the issues today are whether, do you want the building built without securing 100,000 square feet? Because that will happen under existing zoning as they legally are allowed to do. Or do we want to secure 100,000 square feet underneath? We have modeled it out financially and the exchange, as I said earlier, is financially beneficial for us at that point. So that's the reason for that. We don't have a ton of leverage because this, this pilot is different in the sense that you're not questioning whether the building will get built. The building was scheduled to be built regardless of this situation here. The question is, do we want to secure an asset for the city? I'm just gonna turn over to Mike Hanley here, who's the financial advisor.
All right, there's a, there's a presentation up to the front here.
What the mayor correctly described is that we are getting a fair bargain. The discount that is being given from conventional taxes to the redeveloper in exchange for the asset we're receiving is fair, reasonable, and there is no likely place we would be able to make a similar trade and cause this project to be completed. So they, they do. They get a benefit for 30 years. But we have no risk on the delivery and cost of the square footage that we're receiving and we're getting it at a fair price.
Sorry, hold on. We're very orderly. Take a number, vice president. Sir, if you could identify yourself again, please.
I'm Mike Hanley. I'm a principal at NW Financial.
Thank you.
And you work for the city?
I work for the city.
We'll, we'll get to it. Don't worry. We'll get to it. Very orderly here at JSQCA. Everyone's got, very passionate. Let's get the, we need information to get out to the community and fast and efficiently. Who has question number four? I'm auctioning off those.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor, thank you for your presentation. I can see why you're so passionate about the project. I just had this one simple question. For 30 years, what's the cost?
Conventionally?
Taxes? And what's the cost?
I'll repeat the question. Just if your mic isn't working, I'll repeat it.
Cost, you know, conventional on the two towers, on that, on that land? What's, what would they have to pay? You know, without the abatement? And how much with the abatement or with the pilot? So just those, those numbers for the 30 years.
The pilot represents approximately 47% of conventional taxes. Conventional taxes would be around $8.2 million. The pilot will be $3.9 million.
So, and, and that's...
So that's per year?
That, yes, that's, that's, yes. And, and, and that's future. So it's not impacting today's future. We're talking about over 30 years, year after year, right? So it's not directly to the budget today. One of the things I would just highlight on this because, you know, I did start with that NJ PAC and I spent some time on this because I was really looking into kind of conversation elsewhere. The same conversation happened at the Prudential Center, at the Arena when that happened. And the difference between NJ PAC and that one was that the city committed at the time, so Newark committed, $210 million. I want to put that in perspective, okay? So we're talking about securing 100,000 square feet in a pilot in exchange for the value of an asset there, right? In the Newark comparison, which I think a reasonable person would say that the arena has been an asset, the Devils being there is an asset, the concerts is a good thing. Not everybody agrees on every component of it, but it has helped the city. They committed $210 million on that. So we're talking about a discount of roughly a little bit more than $4 million making the schools whole on that.
Yeah, so the school's gonna get their full, I guess, conventional payment. But for, as far as the city, about $150 million in, in cost savings to, to you, right? Or to whoever's who's building it. How much would the center have been cost to be built? How much that 100,000 square foot center? How much did that, would that cost?
I'm going to give that to him. The original plan, it's a good question, Chris. The original plan at the Pathside Building was 198 million, or was, am I right about that? Total project cost was $198 million across the street. This is obviously substantially less, but you want to speak to exactly that? Maybe you can pull it up.
The project at Pathside, the part that we're receiving, we're receiving from KRE would have cost us around $100 million at Pathside.
How much?
Around $100 million. Which, which over 30 years of refinancing, it would cost us nearly $200 million. So, we're, we are better off by virtue of having this project be built in this way than we would be with the alternative. This is financially superior.
Some of us don't really understand that. Can you put it all clear? It's difficult for laypeople to understand. You're a professional. We are, some of us are not.
Okay, I'll try again. I apologize for not being clear. The, the construction cost at Pathside was going to be something around $100 million for the box that we're receiving from KRE. That would have cost us, if we financed it, probably around $200 million over 30 years. We don't have to pay that. We're receiving it as a discounted value from the, uh, from the developer at a cost that is much lower. It's in the 60s.
What if we didn't, if we didn't develop that site? You keep saying to me, and we're getting a discount, but it wouldn't be a discount if we weren't doing it, would it?
Your question, I want to go back. The, the question about what if we weren't developing the site is not a valid question. There, there's somebody that owns the property, and that site is being developed regardless.
I think he's speaking about the museum aspect. He's saying that we don't do it all together. That's not, the site is going to go up. It's, he's speaking like about actually financing it for the city.
But that's why we're all here, right? We, we know we're here, because we are trying to get the Pompidou built. If you're against it, of course you wouldn't support spending the money on it. What we're talking about and trying to describe is that this is spending less money. We are doing financially better compared to what we had before. But of course, if you want to spend zero dollars on the Pompidou, this is, you're not going to be in favor of this, and we don't have to have a long conversation about that.
What about not being, not following orders?
Yeah, yeah, sir, sir, sir. Alright, alright. I gave you a follow-up. Number five, ma'am, at the left there?
So we always take some money, right? Because they pull from the back. And I don't remember how much, how many millions, but they want like a chunk, right? Um, so where is that going to come from? Um, and after 30 years, who owns the 100,000 square feet of space in the building? And then, I'm sorry, it's a three-parter. Um, but then what about the old location? Because we bought it, right? So are we going to sell it and get that money back? And, you know, use it for something else, or what, what's the plan?
Okay. So, so 6 million, money to the, money to the state, Pathside Building, and who owns it?
Yep, after 30 years, who owns that?
We own it, we own it.
In perpetuity.
In perpetuity, it's our, it's our space. Um, we spent roughly $6 million on consultants and experts and architects and construction drawing, which is transferable to the new project. We've been back and forth with the state on reimbursables. They said they wanted their money back. We said that it was an approved expense. Um, this is going on right now, back and forth for some period of time, and it will continue to go on for some period of time. Um, the third question was... Could we have the architect speak to the transferability? I just want to, could, could we get the architect to comment? Well, I mean, we, we... I get it, Sam. We need clarification on that. I'm, I'm talking, Sam. Yeah, yeah, we need clarification. You could follow up with a question, and we could go through it, Sam. Like, it's okay. I know you've been opposed to everything that we've done on this one. Well, not, not necessarily, but... No, you have. Okay, but we'll come back to that. We'll come back to that, thanks. The Pathside Building, we own. We bought it at a discount. It's of higher value, obviously, today than we purchased in 2018. I think any reasonable person could say that. We do not have a, a goal. I mean, Tom mentioned, I'll tell you what, he mentioned last week, that conversation here about some market, uh, options. We could sell it to defray some cost on this project. Um, the options are open. We haven't gone down the road at all on what to do with that.
And Mayor, just on the Pathside, I hope you will commit to a community meeting on that. We do have ideas without selling it as an asset. Who has number six?
I think.
Sam, what number are you, Sam?
Nine or six?
I was going to say before, you already got a question.
Alright, alright, alright. I got a couple more.
Sam, we'll get to you shortly then.
Uh, my name's David Tronka. Uh, I'm a local business owner. Uh, I'm actually a tenant of developers who are going to be building. Uh, I also run the senior congregate program for Jersey City. Uh, so the project, uh, to me, uh, is really, really exciting, especially as a business owner, especially also as someone who runs the senior congregate program. I heard there's going to be senior programs in there. We just got the Connor Center open, but there really isn't anything in Journal Square for that, that, that to live. So, excited to maybe potentially add another space. I don't have a question, you guys have answered a lot of my questions.
Can I say one thing I missed here, that I should be, be, on the small business front, okay? So when we provided all of the economic impact studies to the state, so the state, the governor, and the first lady asked us and the EDA for all of these economic impact studies, so we have to go hire independent experts, and, and that's part of the dollars that we're talking about right now, because when she asked about what's reimbursable to the state, we started down the road, some of the stuff they've told us to do, and they obligated us to do. Um, and the estimates were that it would net $11 million back to Jersey City in improved ratable base and taxes as a byproduct of having this there. So that's increase in property value, number one, but we're extracting some of that with that special improvement tax. New businesses, so you're talking about things that open in proximity. So whether it's lunch places, restaurant, increased activity, employment. So there was $11 million that was ultimately back to us, and, and grossed, it was $55 million that was back to the state ultimately. And also on the economic impact study, as far as investment goes, um, I don't know, we, we had another study, because we have to go through these things, on what the arts impact is to the overall community. I don't know if you have that, that stuff, where you want to speak to, Christine? Do you know it? Or not really? As far as what the benefit is for every dollar that we invest in this front? And that's why we have invested, whether it's the Symphony Orchestra that is coming here, whether it's the trust fund that we started to support local artists, all of those things speak to that.
Yeah, you know, um, I was born here in Jersey City. My family's from here, my great-grandparents are buried on the hills, in the old cemetery. Um, why I chose Journal Square to build my business? Because my mom used to talk about not going to New York City. She said you should come to the square. And this project, I know there's a lot of heat in this room right now, but this project is that. And I'm sure the mayor and Tom and John, I, I, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm sure that Tom, the mayor, and the developers, who I've been with for seven years, and there's a lot of people in this room, Rashad, our old poet laureate, Tom, we've done cleanups from Journal Squares. If there was any people that I would line down on the tracks, and as a local business owner, coming, speaking in this way, I am lying down on the tracks, and lying down on the tracks with these guys, because there's nobody to care anymore about. John walked here on Shabbat for some reason. Like, I know it's a heated room, but if there was anybody that we would trust this project with, it's this gentleman and his brother. They care a lot about the arts, they care a lot about the community. Um, and that's, I'm, I'm definitely just here to say that.
I want, I want to say, David, I thank you, I thank you. I want to, I want to, what, this is not a foreign model to... What we are proposing here with 100,000 square feet is not a foreign model to what the city's done before. So like, it's important to be factual about this stuff. So, the Boys and Girls Club downtown, those of you that have been part of Jersey City for some time, it was an old Boys and Girls Club. It happened to be rebuilt by this same developer in this same sort of model. So they built out a white box condo that was fitted out for the Boys and Girls Club, given to the Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club, in the current location that you see today. So if you think about, we used leveraged real estate advantage that we have here to build a new Boys and Girls Club, which is phenomenal, which would never have existed otherwise, because you couldn't afford it. Same model. The new PS-16 that exists downtown, a traditional public school, same exact model. We as taxpayers could never afford that. You don't feel it as an impact with regards to construction? We worked with the developer, same sort of thing as a subsidy in order to get that PS-16 built. Same sort of thing at the new East District that's being under construction at the Stacko Project. We leveraged development in order to make that a reality. Same thing at Nimbus, as a matter of fact. No, it's not. Yes, we... I, I, it's my turn, I'm going to...
We're almost there, we're almost there, right?
The city, the city, the city, okay. Listen, let me answer that.
Alright, 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 alright.
Let me answer that, let me answer that, let me answer that. And you'll have your turn at number nine. The city rezoned a building, okay? The city rezoned a building where Nimbus exists. We rezoned a building where JC Arts exists today. Where we, we did those things, giving an incentive to the developer at the time in exchange for a cultural center underneath. In the case of Nimbus, we gave it to Nimbus. We didn't do a, a, a big search, ultimately, we gave it to Sam. Candace Osborne, who was the councilwoman for Ward E, spearheaded that. You could Google it. The same way for Art House, ultimately. This is not foreign.
That's, that's wrong.
It's not, Google it.
I'm going to take a number. I am very appreciative that we have guests who do not usually come to our meetings, but we do things orderly. Everyone has to get, everyone has a voice in this room. Everyone has an opportunity to speak at our meetings. You will have your time. If you want to fact-check the mayor, take a number. And you'll have your chance. He's sitting here, he's not running away, he's still here. Who's number seven? Seven here, thank you. After seven, I'm going to, I promised some questions to the local media and Pepper and some other issues, so we'll go there, okay? So if you're a reporter, raise your hand, please.
Good to be here. My name is Alvin Pettit. I'm a local Jersey City artist, as well as representative of the board of the Jersey City Arts Council. And, amazing artist, by the way. I just want to give credit to where it is. You just got an amazing opportunity in Philadelphia, and I want to just highlight that, correct? Like, an amazing, amazing commission from the city, right? Really amazing. If anybody can Google Alvin Pettit, it's actually a phenomenal thing. Thank you, Mayor. So, so, I, I feel that, hearing all the voices in the room, and I respect even my fellow artist colleagues that may share a different opinion than mine, or have a different opinion than mine, but I have to say, I feel a lot of the big picture being missed here. And what hasn't been talked about, we're talking about stats and budget and all that, and those are legitimate concerns. Everybody's points are very well considered. But what's being missed is the cultural impact that the arts has on the city. And I don't think that's been talked about enough here. I mean, I work in the community every day. I see how art literally changes people's lives. And what's not also being talked about, I feel, is the residual impact economically that a major art institution anchor has on the city that we don't currently have. I mean, we're a grassroots arts community, which is a great thing, and we support each other. When I go to art openings and stuff, I see a lot of the same faces. But we still have to grow, we have to go to another level. And if you look, Newark was brought up several times. You've got NJ PAC, you've got the Newark Museum of Art. Jersey City doesn't have a reason to bring in tourists. And when you bring in tourists, when you have, yes, we don't, I mean, no. I'm sorry. We, we have to have, we have to have institutions that help bring in tourist dollars. And that actually helps the arts community, it helps all of Jersey City in a, in a long-term impact. And I would like to see that emphasized more in this conversation. Regardless of where you stand on the Pompidou in itself, as a, as one institution, but it is a start, it's a launchpad. That, right now, I feel is desperately needed in the arts community and in Jersey City. And if anything, if there's a question in here at all, can we also talk about the long-term economic impact that major institutions have on, on, on cities? Even locally, whether it be New York, where they even be in local, like, um, Newark or whatever? And how that benefits in the long term? And if you're going to see some stats on that, because I've seen it happen in all major cities. You don't grow without having a culture of art institution, and, and art community. So that's what I have to say.
And Mayor, to add on that, you wanted to provide an answer, so the, the, thank you for being here, Alvin. The Arts Council, um, put out an op-ed in favor of this project, saying, uh, Journal Square in Jersey will become a tourist destination. So there's concern from the local community, one about what's the benefit to local residents? I know the, the fee will be free, but how often are we going to visit, uh, the exhibits there? And the question we got in over the week, well, during the week, was, if the city can't manage 911 operations, can't manage traffic in the morning, how are we going to be able to city work tourist destination?
Okay, alright, so let me, let me, let me, uh, let, let, let me say the first thing. The first thing, the first thing I said amongst that first thing that I said was highlighting the fact that I made a mistake in allowing it to be portrayed as a museum in the sense that people immediately knee-jerk reaction is that the core mission is hanging and displaying artwork. And that couldn't be further from the truth on how they operate every else in the world. Every else in the world, it is a cultural center with after-school programs, with senior programs, with community speakers. It is a lively area. Half of the space that is designated today is flex space, gallery space is listed. Half the space is community space with, uh, classrooms, with multimedia centers. If you go to the institution in Paris, and I'm not advocating that here today, I know we have a short window, but like, the place is buzzing with children. And it's like, very, very exciting, similar to Liberty Science Center, same sort of feel. And that's at their core mission. So I would tell you that the majority of the people that will benefit are people that live here. And to say that other people will benefit outside of that, so why should we do that? Is a silly way to look at it. It would be the same thing as saying, well, we're building, or it's the same thing as Essex County saying, well, the Turtleback Zoo is visited by everybody in New Jersey, so we should not pay for it here, and only the state should pay for it. Essex County benefits from it tremendously. It would be the same thing as us saying, we shouldn't build a park if it's only for Jersey City people. Yeah, other people are going to benefit, they're going to visit us, and it's going to help economics and all that other stuff. But the core people that are going to benefit from this are Jersey City people. Yes, the council asked for free tuition, I, I mean, free access and free membership for Jersey City. And our goal is that. Like, that's that, to really accommodate Jersey City people. But it will be a huge asset ultimately to it.
Alright, John, John Hyas from Hudson County, thanks for telling me a good question.
Uh, thank you, Journal Square Community Association, Mr. Mayor, and everyone else working on the project. So, I know that you guys said that the initial project that was going to be at the Pathside All-In was approximately, give or take, $198 million. For the what at 808 Povonia, what are we at All-In? My other question is, the library, if I'm not mistaken, is budgeted to put $2 million in, and I know you mentioned that at the top of the session here. But does that mean, say, the budget, I don't know what it is, it's $50 million today, let's just say? Does that mean it will just be $52 million, like, to follow the year? Like, how would that allocation work?
The conversation today is securing, again, the pilot is to secure the 100,000 square feet that we own in perpetuity. I don't want to get that lost in this situation. So when everybody's talking about, how much will this cost? How much will that cost? The trade that we are talking about today is us acquiring an asset that we could never acquire otherwise. So in the case that the conversation with the Santra Pompidou totally falls sideways, for whatever reason, it becomes totally unaffordable, and we're conscious of that. It becomes an unreasonable partner, which I hope not. Or the programming doesn't exist in a way that's, you still own the space. So, so that is the important thing from the trade standpoint. I don't know if you just want to add anything to that? Yeah?
So, Joe Bowne, again, my job is to protect the city through this process, right? And we're risk averse. Jersey City's risk averse, government's risk averse. So the, the question that's being called for the council at the next meeting is simple. Would we like to have 100,000 square feet of art, cultural, museum, educational space that we will own in perpetuity in Journal Square? That's it. The obligations for the budgets and all the other things that are coming and we're estimating, those all are going to have to be worked out. The arrangement with the Pompidou, the arrangement with the library, the arrangement with the city. All those things are to come. So the way we manage risk is, we have a specific decision, and if, as the mayor describes, things go south, we will own 100,000 square feet of educational, museum, cultural arts space in downtown, guaranteed forever. How are we going to manage this through the operating budget? So the expectation is not that Jersey City will run a cultural arts center. The expectation is they will be a nonprofit, similar to every other model in the state of New Jersey. Similar to the Jersey City, the Science Center, similar to the PAC. So it will be a nonprofit responsible for entering into an agreement with the library for the $2 million to provide educational services with the library. It'll be with the... It'll be, it'll be up to the, the nonprofit to enter into an agreement with the Special Improvement District to, uh, you know, support them as well. The city's role, as we contemplated, is as a landlord, and that's why we have a line item for some of the operating expenses, which, by the way, we used estimates from the Pathside, which, I mean, that's more expensive than this building. So, the plan, you have to take this sort of iteratively, right? So we, the mayor uses the word luck, I don't like him using the word luck, because my view is, we prepare for four years, and then an opportunity presented itself. That's what luck is. If we hadn't prepared, we wouldn't have luck. If we didn't have the opportunity, we wouldn't have luck. So we prepare for four or five years to get to the moment where we can secure 100,000 square feet of arts, cultural, educational space in our, in Journal Square. That's the question, that's where we should decide. There will be a lot of work to be done between here and there to open up the Pompidou. We have to figure all these things out, and we will have to do it in the confines of the law. There are limits on what the city can agree to binding future governing bodies. We just can't agree for the next 30 years to, yes, I'm, yeah, so, but again, my point is, we have to, in order to make something this large work, you have to take one step after the other, you have to measure your risk, make a decision, and move on. So the first decision for us today is, for the debate which Mike has described to us, is revenue neutral. I would argue it's not, because of all the other benefits. Take that for a moment, do we want this 100,000 square feet arts educational space in Journal Square? We will then, and again, maybe people don't, right? But, okay, except, maybe people don't, but the next step from there, we move on to, how do we build the nonprofit? How do we, you know, get that operating budget to work? How do we build that space?
Let me, let me address the library situation, just front, center, straightforward, okay? So there has been no administration in the last 40 years that has invested more in the libraries than our administration, that is a fact, okay? We have renovated tens of millions of dollars at the downtown library. As a matter of fact, next week is the first new library opening in the last 40 years that we, with the city council, actively did. So we are passionate about the library. This in no way is a reduction in services. The goal, the goal of the library services is to have satellite, satellite delivery from this existing building, the Sainte-Pompidou, into, run by the same program, into all of the libraries throughout Jersey. There would be a presence overlapping between the programming that we are doing here at 808 Povonia versus the program that we are doing, whether it's Five Corners, whether it's Downtown, throughout the city. And that's why that $2 million allocation is there. Again, going back to why the library, the library is a core part of the institution and programming in Paris and everywhere else in the world, it is part of their community mission. And it was my mistake, I said it earlier, I should have corrected the narrative with regards to museum, 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 because how people view that ultimately, and it's not consistent with what they, our objective is or their objective is. But that's where we are, but the library is an expanded service, is what we're talking about, not a reduction.
Mayor, does that mean that the city's going to allocate an additional $2 million to the library, and then the library will get that back to Pompidou?
Well, so, so yes, the, the way it works, the, the way it works on the library, let me just talk about library funding, for example. The library funding is mandated by the state to grow based on the ratable base. So as the ratable base grows throughout the city, which we are growing at a very, very fast rate, the library budget grows exponentially on that. So those dollars are coming in, and in the existing facilities, with regards to services, even when we expand commute, computer services, ESL services, all of those things, more money comes into that bucket than we could spend. So allocating it towards programming like this makes a lot of sense, and it doesn't impact you in a way that you're, that some people might perceive that it does, because of the way that the library funding is obligated.
All right, who has question number seven?
Eight.
Sorry, eight, eight, oh, Richard.
One addition to that, the library budget, you, you, the library budget, well, just in the last six years, so this is an important thing, why can we expand the services where we have, we reach a critical point? The library budget has expanded, has doubled, it has doubled in the last six years. Think about that, it has doubled in the last six years, not because we're raising taxes around that, because there's a formula that mandates, as the ratable base increases for the city. So as you see these buildings grow, there is a mandated extension of the library that is extracted from that. And that's how that works.
All right, if you feel comfortable identifying yourself and where you're from, someone will watch you online, ask who the speakers were.
Yeah, hi, I'm Richard Laurel, I'm the official folk artist and certified eccentric of Jersey City, as it were. And I'm, we, we're talking more and more about benefits, and we're getting away from the Pompidou itself. And it seems to me that we're spending money on the Pompidou franchise, multiple millions of dollars per year, every year. Why don't we just have, why don't we just have a museum of contemporary art? A Jersey City Museum of Contemporary Art, and include all the existing nonprofit art organizations in there? And just do that?
I, I, I am going to go, I, I'm going to go back to something that Alvin said earlier about the reality and being fair about global institutions and reach, okay? And both where we are situated, we have a great arts community here, but how the extension is, and what we can ultimately get out of it long-term. So when you think about, that I told you earlier, $11 million by the Independent Economic Impact Studies, okay? On what the ratable base will change in the $55 million to the state of New Jersey, part of that benefit is ultimately because of the global reach and the partnership there. Secondly, they have invaluable experience from doing this all over the world in a successful model. Third, they have access to art and collections and history that we don't have access to. So we have tried as an administration, whether it's the Arts Trust Fund, we are the first, the first in the country, and it's replicated now, to allocate dollars directly in that way, not towards operations, towards growth of independent, or, or, we, we partnered at the Apple Tree House, some of the people in this room are part of it, to highlight Jersey City's history and have a museum of Jersey City history. But we also need to be, like, realistic about scale and opportunity on that sort of front, so.
Are you going to have a series of public input meetings like this, but with the Pompidou administration figures? So that we know what they have to offer and what we have to offer them? That's part of the transparency process.
Yeah, I, they've had a lot of that, I don't know, do you feel, I'm going to invite Anna up, who flew in yesterday, okay? And I, maybe if you want to talk to, to that a little bit and, and highlight some of that stuff.
Hi, I'm Anna Hiddleston, and I'm a curator from the Pompidou Center. I might be working on this project for the past three years. Signed back to me, thank you for coming. So to your question, everything Steve has said is true about the Pompidou Center, obviously what we do in Paris, but also I just want to emphasize our commitment and our belief in this project. And the fact that it resonates profoundly, deeply with what we stand for and what we believe in, which is that art and museums or cultural centers, which is what we are, are there for the public and serve the public, and also serve local artists. Because we talked a lot about the collection that we have, and we do have masterpieces from modern contemporary art, the biggest collections in the world, on Apio Moma, who are people that we work with as well. But what's important to us is how we can create programs that interweave that connection with exhibitions, with commissions, with production support for local artists, for associations with museums, for all the existing venues that exist already in Jersey City, and how we can work with you together to create spaces for you and to create visibility for you. And also to create connections for you internationally, to bring all the expertise that we have, because we're, you know, we have, I work with people who are really top of our field. What we can bring to you and how you can benefit from that. So this is core to our mission as well. And what, obviously, a museum or a cultural center, because this is what we are as a cultural center, is not just about art, it's about people. So obviously, that is about being rooted in where we are. So everything we're doing, everything we're thinking about, all the programming that we've been seeing with Charles over here, who I've been working with for three years as well on the project, is for Jersey City. So it's not just about taking the exhibitions that we do in Paris and bringing them here. It's about what resonates with Jersey City, with its history, with its communities, with its concerns, and how can we adapt our programming, which is multidisciplinary, by the way, it's not just about exhibitions, it's about performances, concerts, debates, roundtables, screenings, films, all of these things. How can we make it so that it works with Jersey City, and that people feel that that's a place where they can, where they belong, and where they can be, and where they can also find their voices?
All right, so we're, so we're expecting in the future, other public input, other public input meetings, with you and with others?
And we've been working together with Charles for three years, and we've met almost 200 people already from different cultural associations, figures, local artists. And with this, actually not that many, really, we need to do more. And we've, it'll take us several years, because it's a lot of groundwork, and that takes time, and I'm in Paris, so I need to come over, and, so I need to be on-site to do that. But this is what we're about, we're about you, we're not about us, so, you know. And also, we are bringing the castos, and modigliali, and sugals, and all of that, so that's great for your kids.
What is your initial contract? Do you have like a five-year lease contract, whatever it is?
No, 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 so, so I, I want to highlight that, that Anna and the team have been, as an example, at JCAST every year since we have partnership. You may not realize that, but they're going every year to the things beyond just meetings, because to them, it is very, very important that they are part of the community and they understand what the artists here care about. Every year, they have been coming here, because that has been their core mission prior to this conversation. The contract with the Pompidou is predicated on having a space. So, so it's a chicken and an egg thing. If we don't have a location, there's nothing to really discuss ultimately with them. I'm not going to sign a contract that obligates the city to something in a way that hurts us if we don't have a space. So you need to secure a space, and then enter in the conversation with them about contracts and terms. But you're, they're here because they want to be here, they love the city like you all love the city, and, and that's why they're here. So I think we're going to get to a good place, but it's predicated on whether Wednesday works or it doesn't work. That's the reality.
I guess, I guess the biggest issue is that, for me as elected official, we're voting for the developer to start building right away. Meanwhile, the benefit that the city is going to receive is contingent upon relationships and, and all this stuff that's going on. Why haven't we meshed out all of the logistics first before, let me finish, man, I don't want to interrupt you.
You're right, you're right, Frank.
So why don't we eye all of, this is what people are pissed off about, the lack of transparency and the lack of having input in their tax dollars. This is where all the frustration is coming from. It's not even a matter if we want the Pompidou Center or we don't want the Pompidou Center. People just want to see a reasonable financial assessment, to see if it's beneficial or not, and then just have a say in, do they think that it's something we should participate in? I just found out last week that it's a possibility that the developer can get the abatement for the two towers, and we'll get, and it's not 100,000 square feet, it's 85,000, and then 15,000 outside, or whatever the ratio is. And then again, there's additional money to build out the actual museum, and these people are not privy to the conversations of how tax dollars are being spent. And that's where the rage is coming from, that's right there.
I, I, I'm here talking on both sides, and, 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 like I said initially, I thought that there would be even a larger room on this, if you believe based on social media and that sort of thing. And I push back, I push back, wait a second, I push back, I, wait a second, hold on, please. I, I, I push back on the conversation on rage, I would push back on that wholeheartedly. I mean, people have questions, and I'm sitting here answering the questions. We have been in conversation over four years on this, this is not a new conversation. I've been to the Journal Square Community Association many, many times, talking about the specifics of this. I talked to earlier today on why the timing matters, okay? Why the timing is now, we provided a 10-year operational budget. I mean, I understand, I've been part of this long enough that people can delay, 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 and set that as a prerequisite, and then nothing happens. But at some point, after four years of conversations, of being involved in the community, of trying to provide everything, of answering questions on finances, on providing a 10-year budget, on outlining what the risk reward is for this scenario, at some point, you need to move forward on that. And that's where we basically are on that. And, 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 and the, the legal process for this, okay? The legal process is, yes, that there is a conversation that was reported on, then an introduction, and then a second reading that anybody could speak on, that's the legal process for this sort of thing. And again, going back to why the timing matters, because circumstances is a small window. Do I wish we had eight months? Of course we do, I do. But the reality is that some people know that if you miss the window on this situation, the building gets built, because it is getting built anyway, then it just doesn't happen. It is what it is.
Surely the window could be bigger than the Jersey City.
We, we have 58 people signed up, we're on question nine, so, like I said, I'll reiterate it again. Everyone gets a voice to this association. Thank you for Fisher, Bill, and Dave for walking in. I also want to give time for our elected officials to, to ask questions that who didn't sign up too, so. Sam, number nine, and for future questions, please identify yourself, and also keep it concise, because like I said, we have 58.
Thank you, yeah, I'm just going to step to the front of the room, so I can make sure that I see the unity here. I'm a full thank you panel. I have a couple of things to, to raise, and I don't want to spend too much time. I've finished a lot of speakers, my name is Samuel Pot, I'm a Jersey City resident, raised my family here. I started Nimbus Dance and Nimbus Dance Works 20 years ago. We're Jersey City's largest arts nonprofit, and statewide, not a clear arts in, in, in urban centers. So just a couple of things I want us to say off the bat, and then, and then address some of the structural questions we've been talking about. Anna, nice to meet you, you know, we are in Jersey City invariably in support of the arts. The arts are essential to who we are as people, they bring people together. Arts investment in Jersey City has been much needed for generations, it's why we have no institution in Jersey City. I, I co-signed a letter with the major arts organizations of Jersey City and, and esteemed artists who are not in favor of the Pompidou, we don't see the benefit. So just want to let you know that, okay? Yeah, but moving on, the question was raised around, what is this discussion? Is this a discussion about a 30-year tax abatement, or is this a discussion about the Pompidou? We can't separate those two, because the problem with that is that if we build out a 100,000-square-foot space that is a cultural space, that space comes with cost. And I'm talking about not the build-out, because it'll get built, I'm sure we can get it built. You know, there's money, we had the state lined up to give, to give a, a line item to build the Pathside when it was going to be over there, we've got developers, you know, we can get this thing built. The real question is the sustainability, and then beyond that, what that means to our community. So just to clarify, because there's been comparisons made between the proposed Pompidou, NJ PAC, Prudential Arena, Red Bull Arena, and various other major infrastructure investments. And, and, and I wanted to spell this, because really, those three categories are entirely different, okay? And let me spell this out for you. The Prudential Arena is a for-profit model, it makes a ton of money, it makes a ton of money. Okay, that's an entertainment arena that is constantly hosting sports, pop music stars, and is making money. That is an, that is an investment where businesses profit, and sure, there's a community benefit, there's, there's, there's local business benefits, but it's a different model. That is not what we are talking about, I want to, just want to make that clear to Mr. Fullop, because if you're confused about this, you should understand. Okay, there's a real, no, okay, let me finish here. There's a clear difference between a for-profit model and a nonprofit cultural space. Nonprofit cultural spaces, however much we love them, because we do love them, Alvin, we think they're important, they lose money, they lose a ton of money. And the only reason they stay afloat is because wealthy individuals, private foundations, and government prop them up, okay?
Support them.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, 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 no, okay, no, no, I'll get to that, because again, no, okay, quiet, please. I'll get to that, because I just know this, I know this field like the back of my hands, okay? So, so, so let me, let me, let me, let me just, let me, let me clarify this, because this is so important, really important. We're talking about a generational investment that's going to cost 100 million, hundreds of millions of dollars, and this is 70% paid for by taxpayers, so we need to get clear on this, okay? So let me just talk about a couple more things here, all right? If we build this 100, this, what is it, 100,000 square foot space, and it doesn't work out with the Pompidou, because we're going to get into their financial model in just a moment, but let's say that financial model doesn't work, okay? We are stuck, you said, this is great for Jersey City, we, we got a 100,000-square-foot space dedicated to cultural arts. Well, if we can't, if we can't afford the Pompidou, who's going to move into that 100,000-square-foot space? Who's going to, who's going to back a cultural, a cultural organization to move into 100,000-square-foot space in Journal Square? Okay, I, I'm telling you right now, I'm telling you right now, there is not an organization in Jersey, in New Jersey or nationally, that can just move in without extensive backing. And I am talking, for all the business people in the room, you know, look, I'm a business person too. I'm talking, I'm trying to break this down, so we're making a smart, sound financial decision for the future of our city, it benefits everyone, okay? I'm really trying to be reasonable here, I, you know, the mayor construed my remarks as, as being against everything he does. It's not true, I'm trying to stand up for what is going to be sustainable for this community, okay? This is a really major decision, I'm trying to break it, break it down for you all, okay? All right, plug my thoughts here. Yeah, you know, I know there's a lot to say, but I just want to, I, I, I have an educational.
I was just trying to get to a question, that anyone wants to read Sam's comments, he wrote an editorial that's published in Hudson County View, Jersey Times.
I want to break down a little bit more about arts funding in Jersey City versus other parts of the state, because the mayor talked about NJ PAC as a comparison to this entity. So we already talked about how for-profit models like Prudential Arena, yeah, no, 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 this is, this is clarifying. We talked about how for-profit models like the Prudential Arena are a, a, a bad comparison to what we're talking about here, because those make money, this loses money. NJ PAC is also not a viable comparison to what we are talking about here in the Pompidou. Newark, I have stats from two of the major foundations that exclusively give to, give funding to Newark. And that's the Prudential Foundation and the Victoria Foundation. Let me get, let me get how much they're giving. The Prudential Foundation gives $47 million a year to entities in Newark. The Victoria Foundation gives $27 million a year to entities in Newark. New, Jersey City has no such private foundation. That has to be a major piece of any major nonprofit institution. Those two entities are backing NJ PAC along with a guaranteed $1 million from the New Jersey State Council on the Arts, which this entity in its first year would not be entitled to. So, you know, I, I just want to really back up here and state again, what we are investing in here potentially is a foreign institution, and I've been there, it's a great institution. Again, the arts are important, and this is not a slight against you or your institution. This is a, this is a, this is a realistic look at the financial model that's being put forward for our community, which does not have a lot of resources. No, no, I'm going to finish. And, and, and our community.
We'll get lots of time, man, there's a lot.
You think I'm grandstanding, but I'm really speaking truth here, okay? All right, so, 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 you know, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to give up the mic here, I just want to say one last thing, because I think this is just so important about the future of our city here, you all. You know, what, what we're deciding here is whether we are going to invest in Jersey City, in our people, in our communities, in our resources, so that what we can, what we invest in builds and grows into something wonderful. The Pompidou requires us to pay a licensing fee to use their name. If we do not come up with that money to pay their licensing fee, they're not invested, okay? We've heard a lot of talk about how they're going to get involved in our community, and, and as soon as they don't see that check, they're not going to be involved in the community. I'm sorry, I've been doing this for 20 years, okay? We, a lot of people in this room know what it means to get involved in the Jersey City community. It's deep, and it's, and, and it takes a lot, it takes a lot more than coming in from another country, and it, it's just, all right, that's, that's all, yeah, that's all I'm going to say, but people.
How much is the fee?
Five million.
How much is the fee? How much is the fee?
Eric, can we hand out a question? Thank you, Sam.
I'm gonna go back to the initial thing that I said, and I highlighted NJ PAC, which is a nonprofit. And a nonprofit that felt the same exact pushback, the first thing I said when I got here. It is structured the same exact way and the same exact conversation 30 years ago. And today, it is an asset. It's the first thing I said. Secondly, I also said that I am gonna highlight the fact that I don't think people are entirely coming from a sincere place on that. And yes, Sam and I have had extensive conversations over this over the years, because at the crux of it is that you've articulated that you have thought it's a fair thing to say, that having a global institution here will cannibalize Nimbus and other opportunities.
That's not even what I said.
You've said this to me before, not here. I'm gonna...
I haven't said that.
Yes, you have. Yes, you have. I'm gonna show you. Yes, you have. And it's a legitimate argument to say, okay, we have had a conversation. There have been people in the room that have been part of this conversation, that the question is, is an arts community sustainable with just going to the same network of people, or do we all benefit by growing the pie ultimately? And this is what it does. And so you have people here... Sam, you oppose the symphony. You oppose the original place. You asked to be the original place.
I did not oppose the symphony. That's not true.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I...
All right, all right, all right. This is still the JSQCA.
We're gonna disagree, Sam. Sam, 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 we are gonna disagree on the fact that we have outlined a 10-year plan, and we've outlined a 10-year plan that is super conservative. And I feel comfortable, and experts feel comfortable, and this is the exact same conversation that happened 30 years, as I touched on, in other cities. This is a common conversation. But like I said, I believe, and I think a lot of people do believe, that when you fast-forward five or 10 years, this conversation will be a small part of what the overall asset is to Jersey City. And I think, and it speaks for that.
Answer the question. How much for you?
Well, again, the same question, the same question is the same answer, is that there is no contract in place with the Sandra Pompidou today. Zero, because, because... There's no contract. I can't give you a guide, because... Listen, 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 listen. There is no contract if there is no space, okay? So that is the conversation today. Are we securing 100,000 square feet of space? Now, if ultimately you say 100,000 square feet, that it doesn't work in this culture, and say, "You could turn it into a rec center, you could turn it into a senior center, you could turn it into a homeless shelter," it is a... Wait a second. The point of that is, when he says, wait a second, when he says, "Who will operate this, who will operate this?" The point of that is that we are holding an asset of 100,000 square feet of value. That's the point of that. That is the point of that.
Mayor did this. That'll go to my question, too. Mayor, the budget that the council received, and you're gonna update it for us, is Pompidou provision of art, 1.75 million, Pompidou branding fees, 1.9, Pompidou consulting fees, 550,000. Total personnel expenses, Pompidou HR, 7 million dollars.
It's for the entire facility.
That's the question.
And we label it as the entire facility, that these are fees for the entire facility. But there is no contract in place. We tried to make everything as conservative as possible to make sure that we have everything attainable. And it's modeled off of similar agreements elsewhere in the world that comported of it, but there is nothing in place.
So I'll turn it to our guest from Paris. Thank you for joining us, France. So if the council, if the mayor's five votes on Wednesday, how much money in other places that do similarly located facilities, how much does the Pompidou charge for licensing fees for granting the art? How much, looking in terms of the budget?
Okay, so that's really, actually, it's not my domain. I'm a curator, so I work on exhibitions and the collection and art history. We have a whole department who, so I can't answer that question, because I don't have that information. Because I'm here for the art and the, yeah, the programming.
Very honest, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just ask the council members, the attendants, to get an answer on that question before you vote on Wednesday.
I'll just say one thing about the idea of investment, because it's interesting that someone who works in the culture, you know, says that, or talks about investment only in economical terms, because the investment is also for the kids, and it's the future, and the dedication.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Just to be factual, just to be factual, just to be factual, again, we don't have an agreement in place. I just want to be clear about that. But you all could Google. There's a similar to look into this. If you look at Malaga, Spain, which just signed the contract, it's $2.7 million town, so for five years. That is a similar institution. So as we throw around numbers, and again, we try to be very conservative, you can see that in July, Malaga, Spain, signed the contract. That is what it is, and it's factored into the budget. So that's a comparison.
No, it's not.
But your projection of...
John, let's go in order here.
We're on number 10, Councilwoman Dejees. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Thank you very much, and for explaining the number. I came early to do so. I did want to speak, and it's very tough to follow up, Sam, to the local arts. And can the city work on a commitment that they have representation on this future board? So we can commit to them, they can help oversee the center, have say in what's in the center, and what their role on collaborative efforts in. And if you could speak to your other worldwide sites on how you work with the local arts community and smaller arts communities, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm gonna turn it over to Anna. Amy, the board structure will be controlled by, initially the setup by a conversation with the council, so you can dictate that if you like, okay? And we're happy to include what you think is appropriate. I mean, I do believe that the local arts should be a part of that. I'll turn it to Anna on how they do it elsewhere.
Yeah, sure. So obviously, local arts will be a part of the board. And how we do it elsewhere, it's not necessarily the same kind of model that we have elsewhere with the board and nonprofit and everything, but so it's cool to say, but for us here, obviously, the local artists will be a part of the project, both in terms of the board, but also in terms of programming and visibility and production support and commissioning and mentorship for art students as well, because I think they can play a role, local artists in mentorship. And also creating opportunities internationally for artists in Jersey City, whether that be through our networking that we have of museums across the world, and also with commissions that we can do for artists here. So the idea is that the Pompidou Center in Jersey City is a platform for artists, but I mean artists in the broader sense. So it's poets, performers, architects, designers, it's, you know, dancers, whatever. It's not just painters. So it's a platform for artists, and that's one of our primary concerns, is to be there for the community of Jersey City, of the arts community.
I made a lot of my... Thank you.
Hi. Hi. My name is Josie Farah. I live...
Where are you, Josie? Okay, I can see you.
My question is, sort of, was addressed a little bit, but I want to make it a little more explicit, relating to the funding, relating to the library budget. I'm a librarian elsewhere in the state, and as you mentioned, Mayor, the way that New Jersey libraries are funded is very specific. Each municipality is required to fund their library at a specific minimum amount, a third of a mil, that's 33 cents for every thousand dollars on your equalized valuation of property. Of course, the municipality can choose to fund their library more than that. My math from the 2023 numbers says that Jersey City funds the Jersey City Free Public Library pretty much right at that minimum, which is 16 million-ish in 2023. As you discussed before, the library will be responsible for 2 million of that 16-ish. Again, it'll knock a little, but in, and more than that in the following years. My question is, if the Pompidou is funded as outlined, will the library be allocated additional funds from the overall city budget to make up for the funds that are being allocated to it, then siphoned to the Pompidou? Or will the library, as we know it now, be expected to operate with less than the minimum allocation?
It's additive. Our intention is additive. Our intention is additive and complimentary program in all the satellite libraries throughout the city.
So you'll be funding...
Additional money.
More than the minimum required.
Yes, that's our intention.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Question number 12.
Hi, Mayor Fulop. My name's Melissa Nigronalto. I'm actually responsible for the truck out front. I'm responsible with the collection of grassroots arts organizations, many of those who signed Sam's letter. I worked until 3:00 in the morning creating content for the truck based on the facts that we were able to find from very little that was available publicly. So you're, I just wanted to fact, you know, check you on that and just make you aware that this is the power of solidarity in our community. We care very deeply about this project coming to Jersey City. Part of that effort, and this is my question, is what is the insurance that DEI will be a part of, the contractors, so contractors, hiring events and programs in Jersey City? Because the artists and all the art organizations that are here today, we supplement arts programming in Jersey City schools and in Jersey City in general. We make up the extras that, you know, the city isn't able to afford. We do that. So we want to make sure that these programs are well-funded, that, for example, in places like Ollie Cuffburg, that school is in utter disrepair and has almost no arts programming. I was there actually doing a digital arts program with them a few years ago. We really, really would like to make sure that we're not getting into a Robert Moses situation, that we're not getting into a situation where the community is completely cut out. And I work with major arts organizations around the world. I happen to work at a major arts organization that I will not name today. But we have, every single arts organization has a department called advocacy, and all they do is go up to Albany, and they go, or wherever, you know, state they're in, and all they're doing is looking for arts funding. So my question, especially to the Pompidou, is as you absorb arts funding from the state, federal, city organizations, how are you gonna make sure that, especially through DEI, that we're getting that money down to the grassroots? Because that's what we care about. It's not just that, you know, we care about the Pompidou name. We care about these programs that need to be better funded and supported, and that they're distributed far, you know, without, in the entire city, not just in small satellite places where that's all the funding we can get. And just so you know, Mayor Fulop, the truck is not very expensive. The expense was my time actually doing the content, which I did until 3:00 in the morning.
And not idling outside.
So, yeah, the question about where the funding will come, is that the question you were asking, so did it come down to you? Well, obviously...
Not to me. I'm talking to students.
I understood, yeah.
Because I know you care about children, so I'm asking you about the children.
But I think children, I think it's important, yeah, I think everyone should. But the idea of working with schools, obviously, and so that it would trickle down, but I think it's important that we work with everybody and that we can give the money that we have and provide it to all the schools and the organizations. We're already working with the Board of Education. We've started meeting with schools. We, the Pompidou is a prestigious institution, so that attracts philanthropy, and that will attract donors, because it's international... No, we don't hope, we know, because we're internationally... We know, because we have a huge network. We are known... But I'm talking about philanthropy that we have to build, but because we have such a reputation, and we have such a...
I'm in the red.
Sorry? No, we're not in the red, actually.
Yeah, come on now.
That's totally in the red. We're not. And we have so financial, solid management. What, I know what you're applying to. We can talk about that another time, but I, we're not in the red at all. And everything that we're doing in Paris, the works that we're doing in Paris, somebody mentioned Massey, is totally, as you said, to be unrelated to the project that we're having here, and it's already financed. So what I was gonna say was, we're like a beacon, so we can bring in the money, and then we can pass it down to you or pass it...
So you're gonna take a cut instead of giving money...
It's about working together.
Down to the actual grassroots. You're gonna take this cut off the top.
It's not so bad. It's about collaborating and bringing, you know, sharing.
I work in the arts. I know exactly how this functions. I know advocacy and donors are very hard to come by, and that there is a lot of competition for, and they don't necessarily have a lot.
The Central Pompidou, I don't know, we're like the biggest institution, one that we have one of the biggest collections in the world of modern and contemporary, and not only art, we have design, painting, photography. I mean, it's great.
In Paris and in other places.
We're trying to avoid the back and forth, we're only on Lucky 13.
It's international, and again, going back to what I said earlier, the goal is to grow the pie here. And I think that that's a collective thing that you benefit from as much as every other artist. And I agree with you. You guys do a lot of work, and it must often go unappreciated. We try our best to spend dollars and highlight that, but there's limitations to that. The good thing about the budget today, I just want to highlight the same point, that the majority of the burden is carried by the EDA legislation on this. That's the majority of it. So if for 10 years, when we mapped out that budget for you guys, you will see that that's the most significant part of this. Everything else is super conservative. We put the philanthropy at roughly $3 million a year, which was a super conservative number when you compare it to NJ PAC, or Liberty Science Center, or Camden Aquarium, or any of those things.
Do you have any donors lined up right now?
We have, again, it's a question of, it is a question of space. Do we have an institution that we are partnering with, and do we secure the space? I don't think there's gonna be any shortage of opportunity to reach that objective that we put there in the line item, because people have expressed interest, and we pushed it off because we don't have a space. So it's a premature conversation. But I feel pretty comfortable that when you look at the budget on the conservative estimate that we put on that front, that it's super painless.
Number 13.
Yes, I'm Lucky 13. Thank you, Tom, and the Journal Square Association. Thank you very much, councilpeople, Councilwoman Dejees, Councilwoman Prince Ray, Councilwoman Bajiano, Councilwoman Gilmore, if he left, still here, because you guys would make the decision for us at the next council meeting. It's a real, as the mayor said, and as the gentleman supporting him said, this is about a tax abatement. Unfortunately, it's linked to a lot of other things. And if we prove this tax abatement, it rolls up many things that impact many other things. If we were to proceed with it, we're very likely gonna proceed with the Pompidou Center, which impacts our budget throughout, about how we're gonna prioritize our spending. And that's gonna get to my one question. As I thank Tom, he asks many of my questions, and I thank him as a highness from Husky County View. He asked some of my questions too. But there's one question we have to get to. And as we walked in here, the mayor introduced himself, and I thank you for making this time, because this is, for the most part, in my consciousness, the first big meeting we've had about this outside of council meetings, but I'm not saying it hasn't happened at other community groups. But he walked in, and he started out pushing us all back. He used his favorite term, which I've been hearing for about 20 years, disingenuous. He said, "Many of us are disingenuous." And he went as far as almost naming us here. And that's not the way we would like our elected representatives to engage in meeting with us. We're hoping we're starting this, because this is a big project. This now becomes Jersey City's number-one priority. And we've been through a lot of history with both this administration, our mayor. There's court filings where his former employees accuse him of making stuff up on the fly, and that's up for us to decide as voters. We can either believe him or not. But as people start pointing out during this meeting, they wanted to fact-check him, and we've taught, everyone saw in the various presidential debates about attempts to fact-check people. People say what they want to say at the moment, and Mayor Fulop, who's a very good politician, he may very well make it straight. I don't know. In some ways, I would like to see him move on and out of Jersey City. And he probably would disagree. He's ready to move on too. And he may be a very good guy. I don't know. But, you know, we have to be able to hold our elected officials accountable. So I'm in the subject of accountability, and I think Mayor Fulop's come out in support of public referendums for a number of issues. We voted on Airbnb, we voted on changing elections, he supported voting on, when he backed casinos in Liberty State Park, adjacent to Liberty State Park, he supported, he said he would buy by the outcome of a referendum. So my question is, why will we not move forward with a public referendum on this abatement and the Pompidou deal? And let's propose a Jersey City proposal.
So the reason that I said that earlier, Dan, and you and I, I mean, you said some things about me personally, it's fine, so I'm gonna respond to those, which I think is fair. If anybody has a question as far as Dan and mine's history, it's Dan Levin, like, wait a second, wait a second, it's fair. You said some things that are, were personal, and I would just say, like, wait a second, I would say, I would say, if you have a question on neutrality, you could go to Dan Levin's Twitter or X, and it's devoted to me, okay? Like every other post for years, years, okay, is devoted to me. And if you have a question about it, you could go and see it for yourself. Every post devoted to me. So there's no question that you're here with that. Now, look, I outlined why the timing is what the timing is. I told you that the building was getting... I told you that the building was getting built, and if you missed the window on why that is, and I don't know what else to tell you. A referendum at this point would basically mean that the project is dead because the timing would not fit. So, here we are. You elect people to speak on your behalf, and there is a legislative process to do that. And we've been very judicious and careful about pilots and abatements and all of this stuff. We've tried to outline everything for you guys and answer them. And like I said earlier, there are people in this room that support me no matter what, and there are people in this room that are critical of me no matter what. Both are fair, okay? And there are people in this room that come here for legitimate answers, and I'm trying to spend my time to speak to them. But to ask for a referendum, you and I both know, because I articulated that and you know that personally, what that basically does. But if somebody has a question on art history or how you feel about me, I mean, I don't respond to you normally unless we're in this setting. Just go to your Twitter page, anybody. You can see for yourself. It's devoted to me. I mean, it's perfect.
So, there's maybe a question for our councilpeople who were here or after the meeting, but someone asked me, and I'll ask you. If the councilpeople were notified in mid-August, why is it now the first time that we're hearing about this plan a week before the vote?
Right, the final vote.
Final vote, yeah.
The council was noted, so the project started in 2018, '19, okay? And then we found a partner. So, it's been going on now for four years with lots of community meetings. This iteration, and I just want to emphasize the same thing, is a byproduct of lucky timing, okay? And that's it, right? The project was being built and is scheduled to be built and commence construction regardless. The finances in place. There is a limited opportunity to find a location in proximity to where we want it to be. This is one of the final opportunities. That is why the timing is. So, we sat down with the council members individually. We outlined for them what we were proposing. We solicited questions. We provided a budget. Some of them had more questions. We provided them more questions. We tried our best to distribute into the public. At the caucus meeting the first time, some of the council members asked us, "Can you go and have a public meeting?" I reached out to Tom Zupa that night, scheduled the meeting for today. But the limited amount of time is really what this is ultimately. And the question is, do you want to secure 100,000 square feet in that to give this an opportunity or not? And the finances make sense, and the opportunity, I think, makes sense if you look at the history of that. But that's what the conversation is about today.
Thanks, man. Number 14.
What's that? We have 50. How many do we have?
58.
All right.
All right, so I do have, my name is Maria, and I am part of the Vanvers Park Association downtown. Actually, I just, not, this is like, that was my final year. Okay, so I do have, there seems to be two issues here. There's one about the building and the pilot, and one about the Pompidou. I've been to the Pompidou, absolutely gorgeous. I'd love to go back. This is beautiful. The Pompidou is my favorite part. The 30-year tax abatement will result in a substantial loss of tax revenue to the city. How, you know, apparently you have a good relationship with the Kushners who are building--
Yes, yep.
--a project, so why are they pushing you for a two-week answer right now? Why can't they wait? They should be able to wait. They waited this long. They can't wait another six months while we discuss the referendum or get some more public input, or make more of Jersey City residents aware? It suddenly seems to be this railroad, you know, track, that you've got to do this immediately. Which is like, to me, really pushing the citizens, putting it at a loss. You don't have time now, suddenly, after all these years. And also, you know, Governor Murphy, you know, pulled out of it because he said it was financially unstable, not a viable, sustainable project. You claim this was a personal issue. I beg to differ. I voted for Murphy and I like him. I would vote for him again if he were running for governor. And if he said it was unsustainable, it's not sustainable. I believe him, okay? So, the 30-year tax-- So, the 30-year tax abatement, we don't agree with that. There has not been a tax abatement in many years. We believe that should continue. Why should you give money to these people building towers who already have lots and lots of money? They're building it. You don't know what to do. Now, why do they need a tax abatement? And now they're putting us to task to make a decision immediately or they're not going to give us this tax abatement, or they're not going to build a tower. So, that doesn't make sense.
Two questions.
The other question was about the Pompidou itself. I had noted on several sites, Art News, one of them, my husband just pulled it up, that it is in the red, that it is not-- That's why you're farming it out to other places. That's, it's in the news.
And also, why did your worker strike?
All right.
All right, all right. I'm going to answer two points. On the, again, the finances of this project have nothing to do with the finances in Paris. The conversation around, the conversation around the current tax abatement or pilot is about securing the space to enter into a conversation.
You want the building?
There is an independent board structured like every other nonprofit in New Jersey that will have that relationship and enter into a contract. The taxpayers will not be responsible for that. We structured a 10-year contract with a major, a 10-year budget with the majority of it being carried by that EDA. The new construction versus the old construction is the biggest reason on why it's economical. The building is being built because they are entitled to build their building under existing zoning, and just lucky as the timing is, is the reason why it is now. Fine, wait a second. Financing-- Let me put it in a row. Financing a project today of any size is extremely difficult. I think anybody who is in this space can attest to that. It is very hard to put together capital dollars in order to finance a project. Once you secure financing for a project, you move forward on that because it is very difficult to attain time value of money. That is a real thing in that space, and that is the reason why there is now. We have had conversations around this for years. Maybe not this exact structure, and that's a fair thing, but that's why we're here. But the question really is not about the Pompidou. That's been a conversation for four years. And I would point out that we go through this stuff, it came in front. We've been through whole cycles around this thing. It's not a new conversation. They've had 200 meetings. The conversation around a pilot, okay, it's a legitimate conversation. But we are securing an asset that's of greater value here. So, I don't know how else to speak to that. And regarding the Pompidou, the finances, I mean, I can't speak to Paris. Anna says that the French press would maybe say that that's a different narrative today. Whatever that is, it's unrelated to where we are today. And if you think the Pompidou is not going to exist in Paris at some point, that's just a, that's just a silly thing.
That's not what people are saying.
No, I'm saying that when you talk about the finances. So, we enter into a contract. It's unrelated to what's happening.
Mayor, I think the question about the Pompidou in Paris is that the government's subsidizing it, so it's over.
So, I just want to highlight, again, the reason that we outlined the 10 years is because you could see how it is that the EDA grants and then what the dollars are, and then a special improvement tax, and the philanthropy numbers and the uncertainty around things like philanthropy were super conservative and super attainable relative to every other institution like that. So, we feel pretty comfortable on that stuff.
But you only did 10 years. The pilot is for 30.
Because, 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 I mean, look, if you modeled out 30 years on what somebody would do philanthropically, it's pretty hard to get visibility into that.
Well, then why give them 30 years?
But I'm going to answer that. Because in order, the value of the 30-year abatement is exchanged not for any benefit for them. It's for us to secure the space. That is of equal value or more to the city. Now, what you see in nonprofits like this is, as over time, philanthropy increases and then access to other government grants and whatnot increases as it becomes more sustainable by itself. And we would expect this to be the same thing. I touched on New Jersey PAC because it's a similar nonprofit. It's a similar nonprofit that the narrative was exactly the same in the 1990s. You could have inserted, you could have inserted this project for that conversation that I said earlier, those three powers, it would have been the same. You would have thought we were talking about Jersey City in 2024. That's the reason I did it. This is not a new thing.
All right, so we're going to ask question 15. Please ask your most concise question. If you have multiple, ask your best question. I know we had leaders from the arts community go on a little longer, but it's 1:00 o'clock. That's all. We have to get going. Number 15.
Hello, my name is Danielle DeDamo, lifelong Jersey City resident of Art City as well as Journal Square. I'm going to pivot away from the arts community and the funding and finances as there has been numerous conversations as well as numerous questions already asked. I'm going to bring up the point of sustainability. Now, let's say Center Pompidou does get the space on Wednesday. The question I have is, what efforts are being made to ensure that the Center Pompidou operates in an environmentally sustainable manner, both in terms of its exhibitions and its day-to-day operations? As many know, there is going to be an ordinance on Wednesday, a first reading, about expanding our tree canopy, as well as other environmental ordinances that have been passed. So, that's the question here. It's like, how is Center Pompidou going to make sure that the environment of Jersey City remains sustainable and that we continue to work in an environmental manner?
If you have number 16, just raise your hand so we can do it.
So, the environment, so the museum model is complicated because doing exhibitions means, you know, flying works across the world. So, exhibitions are not necessarily good for the environment. So, this is something that we're, we've been thinking about a lot in the museum world because we're directly impacted by that. One of the ways that we can be better with the environment is to ship less, well, ship our artworks over, but for a longer period. And then, as I was saying earlier, work locally with local artists and contemporary emerging artists. So, that's one of the ways that we're thinking about how we can reduce what we call our carbon imprint through the way that we program our exhibitions.
I think it's a fair point on the DEI comment that was mentioned earlier and the sustainability. The Wednesday vote is not the contract with them. That's the next step. And you're right. I mean, we will include those things. The council members are here. I'm sure they're going to advocate, so those are things that we can--
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if the ordinance does go through, what is going to be the, what are going to be the ways that Center Pompidou or whoever has that space will make sure that the environmental and sustainability efforts of Jersey City will go for?
It's fair. It's fair. It will be governed by the contract and the next steps in this.
Hi there. I'm Joel Brooks. I live on Duncan Ave. Mr. Mayor, everybody, thanks for making time today. So, you know, Mayor Fol, you said you wanted to have kind of like a fact-based conversation. And, you know, in terms of Journal Square 2060, you did vote for that in 2010. That was, it was a different economic time. We're coming out of a recession. You know, my question for you or for anyone who's up there, or I think some of the developers are here too, is why it's a good deal for Jersey City taxpayers in 2024 after corporate developers have had, you know, years of low-rate financing to kind of stockpile cash? Why it's a good deal for Jersey City taxpayers, for the developers to get, to pay, you know, less than 50 cents on the dollar? Thank you.
Thanks, Joel. I think that the, maybe, the-- I'll turn it back over to Mike Handley on this, but the value of the space that we're getting is of greater value or equal value, you could argue greater value because of the cost to construct, than what the developer is getting. And the risk ultimately is larger on the developer's side because it's over 30 years versus where we are. That's the conversation today. The complicated thing about this project in an isolated way is that the project, again, the timing issue is an important part of this conversation. The project was getting constructed, scheduled to start September, October, regardless of this. So, the project was getting built based on that plan. Again, I voted for it in 2010 because there was no development at the time, and we moved forward. I was in the city council at the time. I voted for it. And probably in hindsight, that we should have factored in more inclusionary zoning and whatnot, but the city didn't have that conversation at that time. If you remember, it was a totally different narrative over here. And we tried to correct it, obviously, with the Journal Square Community Association, and they led the charge on this. But the conversation is around obtaining the asset there ultimately, and that's why it's happening now. It could happen without that, and it'll build a building, and we won't have the asset ultimately. And that's really what the conversation is about. Yeah, sure.
So, just for, you know, the layperson out there, so if-- If the ordinance is not passed on Wednesday, developers can build as of right-- redevelopment plan?
Correct.
Pilot or without a pilot?
They would build without a pilot or a community giveback, and there's no obligation on the PLA. So, the thing about the PLA, which is the Project Labor Agreement, is that we can obligate on the portion we have. There's nothing there. And there was no in the core, which this is part of, there's no affordable housing required. So, they can build by right without changing anything. So, they're not getting more units. They're not getting more density. None of that stuff has changed as a byproduct of that. What has changed is that we saw an opportunity to capitalize on us owning some space, and we started this conversation.
So, they would pay the 8.2 million as opposed to the 3.9?
Whatever the number was that Mike Handley, that's it, yeah, I think it was 8.2.
Yeah, okay.
Hello, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, for coming in and actually talking to the community before the vote because it was not the fact with the symphony, right? And I actually met, well, let me introduce myself. My name is Olga Mina. I'm executive producer and the founder of Jersey City Theater Center. And also, with our own money, our family, Ben and I, we-- we renovated White Eagle Hall. And the mayor's congratulations that year to us was, "It's not going to survive even a year." It costs taxpayer, taxpayer zero dollars. And my question to the mayor, when he got so much love for the art, and especially international art, and why he said that we're not going to even survive a year?
I have no idea what that is, but happy that you guys--
It was the arts, Steve. Those who were, you were at that meeting, right, Samuel? When Steve, when Steve said in front of all the artists in a room that we'll see how, when Robinson asked you a question, Steve. And she said, okay. Robinson said, "Why Eagle Hall was built on Olga's and Ben's money?" And you said, "They might not even survive a year." And it was said in front of arts communities, Steve, at Batum Center. That's one. Number two, I know what investment my family made in the arts and I made in the arts in Jersey City. I work 80 hours a week in order to sustain my organization. I would like to know, how much money have you donated to arts in last 10 years? Because you donated zero to Jersey City Theater Center.
We have purchased, we have purchased art from local artists, okay? And this is not a question here of, what have I donated to the Jersey City Theater Center? I think we're losing our way here. No, it's not. This is not the conversation.
No.
Like, wait a second. Time out for a second. I do not, this is, this is not related to this conversation. But here's the thing, if I said that, which I don't think I did, but if you said I did, I was wrong. And you know what? I don't know what to tell you about that.
So, to continue this conversation about NG PAC, because I know exactly, not only I'm a member of APAP, ISPA, I also know what's going on in the state. And I know that NG PAC, and you can search that, is not a sustainable model, okay? NG PAC just utilized their parking lots in order to become a real estate company. And real estate is sustaining NG PAC and the state. And real estate is sustaining NJ PAC and the state, not the arts. So if we don't succeed, do we have the parking lots to make Pompidou sustainable?
So, okay.
No, no, if you can, if you can, because I have more. I actually, 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 as you know, you also mentioned Prudential Center, and they are our tenant at White Eagle Hall, as many of you probably know as well. And behind Prudential Center are billionaires, billionaires, right? And if, if they don't make our rent at White Eagle Hall, they have a huge pocket to pay for it. So I would like to know how Jersey City residents are going to cover all the expenses for Pompidou. And another thing, Anna, I respect you, but I don't think this diverse community need any superior culture to tell them how to run their arts. You understand? My people, no, no. Your government is giving you 4.2 billion dollars, 4.68 million people, and you're still in a rat in France. Come on! And, and, and for doing.
Hold on, hold on. One question per number, folks. JCPD is a great organization. All of it, thank you for coming here, I was a board member, but remember, there's a lot of people in the room. One question, if you have a personal gripe against anyone here, can you get up some other time? Doesn't affect Pompidou. All right. Can you respond to the NJ?
I mean, I think it's ridiculous to assume that NJ PAC is not successful. And as NJ PAC had had the same conversation when it started, as I've outlined, it has grown exponentially, it has been a huge asset to Newark, it is a huge asset to the state of New Jersey, I think anybody recognizes that. And coincidentally, just this week, if you Google it, it's true that they've got hundreds of millions of dollars in support from the EDA, from philanthropy, and they built a whole new community center as an extension of that. It has been a success by any metrics. So if you are going to compare this to NJ PAC, I would take that comparison every single day.
KPMG does an annual evaluation of NJ PAC's tax products. I would just suggest that you have a look at that. It is a not-for-profit.
What was the resource here?
KPMG does an annual tax audit of NJ PAC. The Performing Arts Center is a not-for-profit model. It is also slightly more sustainable than it would be in this particular year.
If you get the mic, please, so we can.
It would be slightly more sustainable this year. It's just running out of its COVID funds, so there was a period, four years, where it had support for COVID. But you can see the records for NJ PAC.
What's the website, please?
Thank you. You probably could Google KPMG, Honor of NJ PAC, you'd probably find it. Next question, 18?
Good morning. My name is Evelyn, and I'm from Hilltop, and I just want to thank you for organizing the meeting because, Mayor, all due respect, you don't make it to our Hilltop meetings. Second of all, I came here from New York over 30 years ago, where Jersey City was affordable. It's no longer affordable. And a lot of you guys said great things. I'm in corporate America, so I need you to show me the numbers. And not just telling me, oh, this is building, this, no. Show me how much more my taxes are going up. Because last year, I got killed, okay? So that's what I want. I don't know anybody else who wants, show me the numbers. It's great, it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. I have artists that live on my block, we're paying for it. We support them, great, they, you know, they think this is a great idea, but now you need to show me the numbers. Show me how much more my taxes are going to increase by, okay? You keep talking about 100,000 square feet. Okay, so if it's not profitable, right? Let's say this, you do this, and it doesn't work out, and now, is it going to be profitable once you shut the doors? And what are we going to do? What plan do we have for it? Because we need a backup plan. That's a lot of square feet.
You need a new plan.
That was it, that's all I had to say. But I think you need to come to.
The Hilltop, the Hilltop meetings are a little bit different than the Journal Square Community Association meetings in that they don't have it on a regular monthly basis the same way. They're more sporadic, okay? So when I do find out and the councilman invites me, then I do go, the same way when they invite me, then I go. But they are sporadic, unlike other community meetings that happen every single month on a set time. Hilltop doesn't operate that way. I think you would be sympathetic to that. With regards to numbers, I told him that, as I've said publicly, we're going to provide that budget. We've outlined it, I think best that we can in a very clear way. If you don't want it, as Mike said earlier, I mean, you can say that I just don't want it, but we will provide that ultimately. On the 100,000 square feet, it is a huge asset for whatever administration. You could never get that again. That is what we are getting. Finally, on your taxes, the way it is structured today, it is not going to have an impact on your taxes because it is a small, small dollar as it relates to your dollar contribution into this structure because of how it's outlined. With regards to your taxes historically or this year, this year you had less than a 2% increase. Last year, the same. But, but, but wait a second, but wait a second. I control the municipal budget, okay? Along with the city council, right? And that's one portion of your taxes, okay? They approved your budget, our budget, which impact your taxes, at less than 2%, okay? And it was the same last year. I can't speak to anything else on that. I could speak to over the 11 years that we've been there, we've been very, very prudent on the city side, and we're happy to provide that as well, and very careful on the city side because we're conscious of this. This will not have an impact on you, how it's structured today.
Could we speak to the Plan B a little bit more in depth?
We're going in order, Sam.
Yeah, but that was her question. What is your Plan B? That was part of her question.
The Plan B is that we own 100,000 square feet, and you can do whatever you want with it as a city. That's the asset that we're acquiring.
Right, but she's asking.
There's no Plan B.
The Plan, the Plan, the Plan is to acquire 100,000 square feet, which is of greater value than the pilot, okay? And that the city retains ownership of that. That is something that we cannot afford today. Your question is, is it worthwhile, is it worthwhile for us to own 100,000 square feet in the heart of Journal Square for whatever we choose? I would argue every single day the answer is yes.
That's her question.
All right, next up, next up, next up.
I have a couple of questions. I actually think this last conversation was really interesting because I think it brings back the original reason we went away from tax abatements, right? So I know currently there's a conversation of like, how much would this cost us today? But the thing is, the 60 tax payments that were given in the past is the reason that your school taxes went up. I mean, it is direct. Like, for anyone who doesn't understand the reason school taxes went up, I was the president of the Board of Education. On your Board of Education budget, traditionally, we were subsidized by $400 million by the state. So your Board of Education budget, there's about $700 million from the city, and there was $400 million from the state. What happened was, as the city gave out multiple abatements, over $8 billion worth of properties put out in abatements, the state said, you have all these fancy buildings, you're not paying your fair share, we're going to take away this money. So out of that $400 million, the state has cut from our budget in the local municipality over $250 million. So when you, when people ask, like, oh, what's going to happen with these abatements? What does the money that they're contributing? The reason all this conversation about the schools happened, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is a lot of money that these abatements do not pay in pilot fees towards the schools. And so what happens is, this money, this money gets put back on the taxpayers, and so your local taxes went up. So there's a school side, there's municipal side. Now, separate from, separate from that conversation, I just want to fully understand the financing of this deal. So we're talking about, and Mike, I think this is specifically for you, I think the question is, is it $150 million in deferred taxes is the cost that we're attributing towards the space? Like, what is the exact cost?
I mean, it's production, but probably under $50 million is reasonable.
Okay. So, and so just to be clear, so that means this project costs the Jersey taxpayers $150 million worth of taxes that the developer hasn't paid, that essentially you are paying, right? Like, it is deferred payments, it's payments that they're not going to be putting into the pot.
Right.
Right, it's a deduction, right? So if they were building tomorrow without a tax payment, they would be paying an additional $150 million in taxes. This deal is going to reduce their tax bill by $150 million. And I think it's a reasonable question to ask, is the $150 million worth the space that we're getting? I think that's a reasonable question.
The answer is yes, it is a fair trade.
To who?
Let him answer, let him answer, just continue. Just lift your voice up.
The asset that we are acquiring.
Talk louder.
Give him a mic.
The asset that we are acquiring, we could never get for less dollars than this. And we don't have to build it, it's being built for us. We're not at risk for the revenue stream in the future as it relates to the project the developer is. This is, if you want the Pompidou, this is an excellent solution to get it. If you don't want the Pompidou, then, you know, you can have the tax dollars back. That's what the vote's about. But the asset itself, even if it doesn't become the Pompidou, is still incredibly valuable.
No, no, so I, I fully ask, I just wanted to get confirmation of the numbers, because I just want to be clear on what the cost is, right? Like, it's not a $1 million fee to the taxpayer over the course, it's a $150 million over trade. And I agree with you, like, on that, on that part of it.
I, I, I think we have to correct this. That is not a cost. We are purchasing with dollars that we would otherwise receive in the future. It's not an annual cost where we're going to be writing a job. It's a difference. The $1 million cost is an actual operating cost, and they need to be distinguished.
I want to just tell you with Usab that similar situation that the estimates, I go back to saying the same thing, is that the city would reap $11 million more in ratables as a byproduct of that. So I think if you look about the trade, we are still ahead on that front. And even if that is saying, okay, that's too aggressive of an estimate, it's not our number, and you say, cut it in half, you're still ahead economically from a ratable base because it is there. So I, I get the fact that you're saying on this specific project, but as it relates to the taxpayer, which I think is what people concerned are concerned about here, the effect is negligible. And she asked whether it would impact her taxes today, and I said, no, because the non-dollar is very, very small.
That's right. So, yeah, again, today it wouldn't impact anything, but I think there is a future conversation about both, and a library fee in addition, right? So we're talking about $3 million total going in from the city. So 30, 3 multiplied by 30 years. I think that, Mike, I have two questions, really. One question is, can we get a legal memo from the EDA that the funding that you're saying is going to apply to operations, you're going to apply to operations? Just so we know for sure that the $70 million that you're saying is going to come to the budget?
Look at the legislation, but the, but our lawyer had to pick up his son, I guess he didn't realize that, how long we're going to go, but I will ask him on a follow-up on that.
Yeah, so I think it's important for us to get that legal memo. I think the second question is, what happens after those 10 years that the EDA funding runs out? Because if we're looking at the long term, I mean, I get there's the fine three question, but this EDA funding that we have, that's said, so that's only going to be for 10 years, now we're looking at a potential, like, $7 million hole in the year 11. So like, how are we filling that hole?
Good question, good question. So, so the 10 years, we projected because there's visibility into 10 years, it's a reasonable number to kind of say that there's visibility into. And what is similar to NJ PAC is that as things become more sustainable over time, the municipal help will decrease over time, philanthropy will increase, connectivity into the state and other nonprofit and foundations will increase over time. And so past 10 years, I think that you will have less of a reliance on this, and that's the reason when you look at the model over the 10 years, the number is not stagnant as it relates to, it's not stagnant as it relates to what the $70 million is, it decreases gradually over time for that reason.
Can we get a fact check on that, please? See if our tuition will go up in your budgets, it will go up year to year through those 10 years.
The number decreases on the reliance on the EDA grants.
Yeah, and just last question on this pilot thing, because this will be the first time we ever do a pilot that gives money to the schools, right? I don't think we've done that.
Correct, yes.
The pilot, so, so because this pilot would now give money to the schools, so the 40% of the tax bill that's now to schools.
The majority of the pilot will go towards the schools, is what you're saying, correct?
Right. The question I'm asking is, so traditionally it'd be 8 million, and so 40% would go to the schools, so, you know, 3.2 million. Would this be 40% of the 4 million now that goes to the schools, or would it still be at 3.2 million? Like, how much do the schools get?
The schools get, the schools are, the council is very deliberate on this. The council, the schools will be made whole, it's not 40% of what we get, it's, they are not part of this conversation, they get what they're entitled to, aren't coming to taxes.
Okay, thank you.
How much is the EDA grant, then?
The EDA grant is a dollar amount that is differing on whether you take it upfront for construction costs as we did initially, or if you take it over a period of time. It is higher value if you take it over a period of time. Because they said originally, the reason that this is viable in the current model is because what we were originally doing at the roadside building is using the EDA grant for construction. We're no longer obligated to use it for construction because the construction costs are much cheaper because it's a newer building as opposed to an old building. And for that reason, we're able to pivot and use that for operations.
All right, next question. Is it roughly 17?
No.
18?
20.
20, oh!
How tall are your eyes?
Good morning, or good afternoon at this point. My name is Catherine Hax, I live in Ward C, right on the border of Journal Square. I've lived here for over 20 years, I'm one of the founders of Jersey City Pride, I have been with the arts community for over 20 years. Steve, thank you for coming, Tom, thank you for organizing this, and thank you for everybody else on the panel, and very much thank you for the council people that are here, and for all of us. I think that it's, you know, a lot of people would probably want to be here that couldn't make it, you know? So the people that could be here, I think that, that's really important, and that we all serve as mouthpieces to our fellow residents who couldn't make it, and let them know what you heard. I'm one of the people who said the meeting is for, I don't have any bad feelings towards you, Steve, I voted for you, we have a good relationship, I am here to get information, and I feel like I have. So my questions have changed because some people have asked some of them, and I feel like part of the conversation has changed. So my first question is just clarity on what we're talking about, right? Because we saw this wonderful presentation of the Pompidou, that's what you led with, right? But now you're telling us that the vote is not about the Pompidou because we don't have a contract with them. It is about this new opportunity to purchase a space in Journal Square. However, the presentation was about the Pompidou. So I, I think that that leads to a lot of confusion, right? So I want the council people to really understand that, right? The mayor said the vote is not about the Pompidou. It is about acquiring 100,000 square foot space in Journal Square that the city will own, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the city will be responsible to build out. KRE is not building out that space, right? So we will have to do that as well. And we do not have a very good history, in my personal opinion, of building out arts institutions. We had a museum, it's, we don't anymore. I mean, I know we have one now, but I'm talking about, we had a Jersey City Arts Museum, it's gone. The city ran it, okay? And then the city sold it to other people for a dollar, and it, and it went underground. And there's lots of things we could talk about, but that's like the basic gist of it. In a nutshell, for people who don't know, who didn't live here, I'm not pointing fingers, I just want to give some history, because I think it's important. The second thing is that we had a 111 building. There's a lot of history there, it's all gone. If you want to see it, it's a bunch of bricks downtown that also was supposed to be built into something that hasn't been. And when you are not an artist and you haven't been in that community, you have to know these things and where some of the hurt feelings and mistrust comes from. There have been bridges over the years, but there have still been setbacks, and I think we have to all put everything in context, which is why I'm glad we're here having the conversation. It's important. We have a citywide arts festival called J-CAS, the Jersey City Carton Studio Tour, that the city decided last year they could no longer afford to run. We gave it to a not-for-profit organization called 14C to run it, okay? That entity is running it, we have no shuttle buses this year to take people around to see art in a citywide arts festival. This is where mistrust comes from, this is where the anger comes from, okay? So now you're asking all of the people who have put time, money, energy, sweat, everything that they've had into an arts community to trust. to trust the administration again, not to trust you personally. And not even to trust the council members. It's generational trust that you're asking us to forego one more time because this time it's all going to pan out and it's going to work. However, we're actually not really talking about an arts or institution anymore. We are talking about purchasing an empty space that could be used for anything. So like, I feel like in this meeting, the conversation really has shifted. Because I would rather be talking about, are we purchasing this for arts or not? And then there's that whole financial aspect, which I'm not going to go into because I am very much concerned about fiscal responsibility. And I hope that anybody that has children are concerned about that as you do as a father. We want to teach our kids that you don't do something unless you can pay for it. Right? But, but these things are like, never have you seen this in conversation.
Well, let me, let me be clear. The intent that we have is to secure the space to enter conversations with the Sancho Pompidou to move it here. So I don't want to be a big use about that. That is our intent. It is a chicken or egg. You can't have the conversations unless you have a space. So the conversation in the vote today is about securing the space so that we could take it to the next step with the city council. So they are linked, but I wanted to be clear about that. Secondly, I want to correct some information on the Jersey Museum. And Kat, you, you are phenomenal and, and you are a huge asset to Jersey City. So I'm going to tread very, very lightly on how I frame this, okay?
I didn't put all the information out there and I just.
I got it, I got it. The Jersey City Museum was never run by the city of Jersey City, okay? We had no role in that. It was an independent board and because it was called the Jersey City Museum, people assumed that we were running it. We had nothing to do with it. We were actually in litigation with them over a lot of these issues. We were adverse to them, as a matter of fact.
But we did run it when it was in the library.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
Went to that building.
Well, I'm talking about really when they established themselves as a building. I don't know the previous history.
We sold it to that, to that entity for a dollar.
Okay, so, so I hear you. We're, we're talking about the year 2000 roughly, 2001, 2000. Yeah, a long, long time ago, like predating a lot of this conversation here. But, but, and then I've seen also that there's been some questions and conversations over that the Jersey City Museum then sold the building and then got rid of its collection for, to somebody. The city had nothing to do with that because we didn't have any ownership of that. So I want, I want to be clear that we weren't involved in any of that stuff. We were actually adverse to that. With regards to JCAST, I don't know if Christine wants to talk about kind of where JCAST is now and, and the, yeah. Christine Goodman is our Director of Cultural Affairs for the city here.
Related to the confidence?
Well, no, because I think that, I think that she.
Well, for JCAST, I think it's an evolving conversation and we are absolutely here to support the project and support the growth of it as a program. So if you need a bus, we'll get you a bus. We've been here to help and.
Yeah, but why did it go to 14C? Do you want to speak about the 14C then?
Absolutely. Well, I think part of the evolution of trying to reach wider audiences had to do with trying this art week from last year and then conversations with the community, a series of meetings on Zoom. We also had surveys to hear from the community. And out of that came, hey, let's have 14C run JCAST. Let's see how it goes. And we can always reevaluate after October and figure out the next step. But the city is very much a partner. We're here to support the whole process, the evolutionary process of finding a tour that really is responsive to artists, responsive to arts organizations, and they can kind of grow and evolve with the growing and evolving needs of our arts community.
21. We have number 21. Still here? Go once, go twice. Number 22.
Sorry. I hope it's okay. I'm actually 36. My son is, oh. What, okay.
No, no, no.
My son has waited patiently.
Yes, so have the rest of us.
Great. I asked, I could have pretended I asked, thank you. Have a great day. How dare you?
My name is John Ross. Stephen, we've met before. You know I'm leader forward against you on different projects. The Pompidou, I've been blessed with being there three times in Paris. I adore the place. I think it's marvelous. One of my favorite spots. However, being number 22 means I've learned a lot today and my questions have changed because this list is now irrelevant. Many of them are currently being answered. As I understand it, the state pulled funding for this project a little while ago. And we, many of us thought the project was dead. I, for one, went on vacation. I learned last week that it jumped back into bed. And now we're all here in a meeting. I think one of the things that comes out of today's meeting is that this is a complex issue. To you yourself have many, many projections for, projections for funding, for anthropic sites, a lot. And at this stage in the discussion, I would say that you're pushing too hard and you're pushing too quickly for the community of Jersey City to have to make this decision in a week. It's, it's not tenable. The people, there's so many people in this room. A lot of people were unable to come today. A lot of people do not, have not learned what I have learned today and what we have all learned today. This is just, it's too fast. It's too much. Whether it goes ahead or not goes ahead, whether it's tenable or not, whether it's a good thing for Jersey City or not, this deserves more discussion. It deserves a lot more consideration. And to try to push this through in a week and a half, quite honestly, smells badly. It's not fair. It's not good. And we're all going to do this globally. You, the city council people, with everybody, with the administration, if this is pushed this way. Give us time, explain, be open, put forward the points of view so that everybody can understand, including laypeople like myself. We're not all financial wizards, so understand. And maybe it'll fly, you know? But this, this pushing and shoving and speedy, trying to get it through, I understand that you're going to push back on me. You're going to say, oh, this is an opportunity. And we have this opportunity, but hang on. Come on, you have a personal relationship with KRE. You are mayor of Jersey City. You can increase the window of opportunity and you can push back on KRE and say, give us a month. It doesn't have to be done by Wednesday. You can do that. I know you can do it. You know you can do it. Come on, support the people. Support the people. That's all we're asking here. Thank you.
Thank you. No, I, I, I think some of that stuff we've answered already on why the timing is wrong. I think that, no, I mean, well, again, I'll, I'll, I'll say the same thing. I'll say it again. The, the, the timing is based on the fact that the building was scheduled to move forward on construction regardless. Finance is, is in place and scheduled to move forward. Wait a second, wait a second.
I think we say that.
The financing was in place and was scheduled to move forward in mid-September. We've already delayed it because there is the opportunity there. And, and, and at the end of the day, the building is approved by right construction. It's different than any other abatement that we've talked about eight, nine, 10 years ago. A lot of those projects were not financially viable absent an abatement. This is a different conversation on this. And that's the reason why the timing is what it is.
So does that mean we have any more cases anymore or no? Is it, is it a gun?
Well, look, the, 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 the timing, the timing is related to that. Yes, this is, this is a question in front for a second reading through the process. The opportunity today was a request from the city council to try and answer questions. And I thought it was important too because there's a lot of misinformation out there. And, and, and so the goal today was to answer questions. People had questions about budget. We answered that. People had questions about timing. We answered that. Questions on location, we answered that. So we tried our best to answer questions because, you know, I read the same things that you guys read, okay? There's questions that, comparison to the MoMA, hundreds of millions of dollars in budget. I said, okay, that's not a fair, but I know it's not you. But I'm just saying, questions on the, that the city gave away artwork in the Jersey City Museum. I know that wasn't recap, but I've read that sort of stuff. So I said, we're going to come here, answer some of these questions best we can.
I didn't ask you another question.
Well, just to be clear, just to be clear, I requested the meeting under the pretense of the people who's ultimately going to be on a hook for funding, voice be included. They weren't, they weren't going, then no one had no talks about doing any media because they said the developer financing was coming up against the date, which is not our problem, by the way. It's not even our problem. That's a problem that the developer have. Like I said, I requested the meeting because I feel like a project of this magnitude should have the input of the people who's ultimately going to be affected. I'm disappointed.
I think you should have more time at another meeting or two in order for more people to understand. Look, you may well win out of this. You might get everything you want.
You're going to do it anyway, no matter what we say.
With the approval of the people, with, rather than pissing the people off. We know you're going to move on to be run for governor. But we're still going to be here in Jersey City.
I'm not going anywhere in Jersey City either, John. I, I love the city. I'm not going anywhere.
Then if you believe that, support the people.
John, I know, okay, let's, let's.
23, gentleman in the back with the Mets hat on, on Mets. And 24, just raise your hand, please.
Hi, sorry, a lot of my questions have been answered already. But I'm actually interested to, being that you mentioned that this is a city decision and this is only held in Ward C, I'm actually interested to hear from the other councilman and woman that are here, along with prospective candidates on their thoughts regarding this project, whether they have concerns or they see positives. So, you know, I'm hearing a lot of good things from the mayor, which is great. And numbers can be projected in a lot of different ways. But again, ultimately, this is on the backs of Jersey City residents and.
I think they, I mean, I, I would honestly.
But, but again, not to bet you off here, but I'm actually interested in hearing from the council that are, that are still here and along with.
They, they, they sent me a lot of questions and I've done my best, I don't know if you've seen them. They've sent me a lot of questions because they've been concerned. Not, not even the ones that are here. You guys, three of them here, they sent me questions, not all of them.
I would like to hear.
Okay.
Because I am the voter.
Go ahead.
Next year, a very important election with Jersey City. So I want to know what direction Jersey City, if you like.
Yeah.
Would any council people like?
Yeah, I recognize our council people when they came and say if either Council Mayor or Prince Eric or Council Pro General wish to speak on the project, we'll do so.
I'm going to be very, very brief here. First of all, for those of you who don't know me, in the council room for Ward B, representing the west side of the city, I have an arts background. I have an arts administration background. I have a nonprofit background. So I've been very closely following everything that's been happening with the conversation on the Pompidou. Before, it wasn't even the conversation on the Pompidou when we had conversation about acquiring the Pathside Building. My role here today is to listen to all of the questions, to really fully understand the concerns, to understand both sides and all sides of this process. So I'm not going to tell you how I'm going to vote on this right now. I'm going to tell you that I'm a strong supporter of the arts and I believe that these kinds of projects are beneficial to the city, how and what they look like. This is not really the forum for that right now. I also, very, very long afternoon for people. Happy to take your contact information and have that conversation with you. I know I had said questions to the mayor. He'd also send them out to Amy Wilson. She had published them in one of her newsletters. So you can read some of the questions that I've been asking. You have to ask critical questions and you have to ask hard questions because this is not a black and white issue. There's a lot of nuance here and there's a lot of positive, but there also is concern because there is, you know, not every project is perfect and not everything is going to be 100% how we like it to be. So that's initially my thoughts. I was not prepared to speak on it. So if I sound a little scattered, that might be why. But I'm happy to discuss it further with you, should you like.
I agree with Mira. And also I received numerous calls this morning. There should be a meeting of the number 26 school for the people in the Heights. And also, the girl that runs the Hilltop is away and the Hilltop should be more advised on what's going on.
But the meeting change anything? Mail? I don't know you're going to cause problems other places.
Councilman Gilmore for that. I just, um, I just want to just reiterate how important it is to have these community dialogues. And I also want to emphasize how disappointed I am in the administration for one, doing this meeting when so much things is going on in the city. And two, for not even advertising on city website how we advertise everything else. So I think if we're going to have an honest conversation, I don't like to do meetings just for the sake of saying, we've done the meeting. Are you going to take the input or the direction of what people are asking? I thought this was going to be a meeting to engage to see what are the potentials we can, like, is there opportunity for it to actually be onsite affordable housing? Is that even a part? There's a conversation, can we have a conversation of them just getting a tax agreement only in the tower where the Pompidou Center is going? So that's what I thought this meeting was going to be, an opportunity for us to give input, for them to go back, reconsider if it's worth it. But this seems to be like a meeting of due diligence just to say, we've done the meeting.
All right, before we get the next question, just answer my fellow Mets fans' point. The JSQCA hasn't taken a position as a nonprofit group on this, as respective to this meeting. We want to get all the information. Become a member. If you're not a member, we're going to pull our membership before we take a position. Me personally, I did an interview with John Heines this week. And the mayor and I have honest dialogue all the time about, you know, issues throughout Journal Square and throughout the city. The timing was an issue. Obviously, our membership cared about lack of transparency. JSQCA has been fighting for more affordable housing in Journal Square for two years. We have a pretty public fight with the city going on JSQCA has been fighting for more affordable housing in Journal Square for two years, we have a pretty public fight with the city going on in the last few months and, and dealing with that partnership. I'd like to see affordable housing in Journal Square, we've got a lot of priorities going on, but watch the interview if there are any other questions, so I won't leave it to the public to, to get their point out. Twenty-three, four.
Halfway there.
Oh, we traded up.
I wanna thank first the kind community member who traded me their number and I'm sorry, Tony, I offended for jumping the line and I did wanna be honest about what I was doing, so. Um, yeah. We've been residents of Journal Square for around 10 years and Jersey City for 13, so I just wanna lay that on the ground, we are newer than some folks here. I don't know that that matters, I don't know that that's the point of government, you know, we come here and we vote every four years to have elective representatives to deal with us on matters like these. Or are we going to expect to show up at the council every week and give our input on every single thing that happens here, you know? I had an idea, sitting here listening to a lot of the conversation, maybe we should sell off, we spent a lot of time in Hamilton Park, because we don't have a park here yet, can't wait for the courthouse park to come. But the thing is, taxes go to a lot of things, I am horribly jealous hearing that the Pompadour gets 68% of its funding from the French government. I wish we had a country like that, but we don't, we don't have a city like that, we don't have a community like that. But as much as we can do to get there, I really beg you all to consider that. From what I'm hearing in this room, Steve is right in a lot of ways, this is a conversation about what to do with 100 square feet in a 60-story building that's getting built. It sounds like a lot of people wish it weren't getting built, getting's built. Is it worth what we're paying, you know, would we rather have $8 million to spend on other things or would we rather have $3 million for schools?
We don't have a supermarket for all people to eat at, you worry about it.
You just, you know what, these developers brought a supermarket to the neighborhood that we had been waiting for for eight years.
And it only came to a certain demographic, it only came to a certain demographic, not everybody in a.
Let's live in the back and forth, let's live in the back and forth, hold on, hold on. Hold on, there's a lot of infrastructure you should be having in Journal Square, let's limit the conversation to today's topic.
That's where you go shop at, huh?
No, I don't go to Paramus, the whole reason we live in Jersey City and not the suburbs is so that we don't have to drive places.
I live in Jersey City, but I, I have to.
All right, all right, all right, grocery's not the top of the conversation, you have a question, just please ask it.
I guess I should just leave it to say, let's solve capitalism in the meeting. Sorry, I'm sorry, it's getting heated. I came here with my son to participate in the democratic process, it's been very invigorating. I actually did have a question, I was curious because I thought that 808 Patonia for a long time had been built as a cultural project. Part sort of larger efforts to bring culture back to Journal Square, I know we heard talk from Dave about his family and that this used to be a cultural hub. And I'm kind of sorry to hear that Pathside may or may not be a cultural space because, you know, we live on Magnolia, I see tourists walking through every day, so the tourists are here. And they go straight to the path and they go to New York and they spend their dollars there. You know, these changes are happening no matter what, so we can harness them and have a great community, I mean, I've been amazed that all the restaurants have opened since COVID because people were always, oh my God, I don't just have to go to sleep at Jersey City and then go enjoy myself in New York. We could build a better community, hopefully for everyone, I know these things are difficult, there's not enough resources for anyone, it's like, why the planet is dying?
You might have said, oh, Walker Shucker, you never been there, oh, Walker Shucker.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, twenty-five, thank you for your comments.
Sorry, but the cultural stuff on 808. So, so for thi- this project, what I said earlier about this project being a conversation for the 10 years, 11 years that I've been the mayor and then a couple of years prior. So, the family that owned this parking garage wanted to sell it, then they could, there was a lot of people involved, the patriarch of the family passed away and then it became more complicated for the better part of 10 years, it started, it failed, it started, it failed. And by luck, this summer, they came to a conclusion, that, that seems to work, okay? The art walk was always part of the original plan, so the planning department always included a way to connect Journal Square to Mana. And they also anticipated a gallery open space as part of that walkway, okay? Over, since that original plan was in place, we decided to widen that walkway as a public space on the condemnation. The Central Pompadour will take the gallery space as part of Phase One to immediately have a presence, assuming we could get there. And that walkway connecting it to Mana was always part of the plan there. And so this kind of enhances it in reality, but we didn't anticipate it that way, we anticipated it being a path side and then going the other way towards Mana.
Twenty-five.
Okay, my name is Corliss, Corliss Williams, I've been living in the Jones Square area for like over 30 years. And I'd like to know, being that you're friends with the Kushners, could you get them to, to take some of them towers that they're building and make them affordable for people that, that work at Walmart or Target or, or some other store or the mall? It would be nice for them to have someplace nice. Also, Sip Avenue and Van Weggman, we had a supermarket there for since I, God knows when, it used to be shot right at one time. And then as a few years ago, Acme told us that they cannot be there no more because a condo is coming there, because y'all, they won't renew, renew their lease.
And they're gonna discriminate.
Yeah. A supermarket, I, I don't wanna, are you saying?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, so, I don't know if you're familiar, Target is coming to Journal Square, right? So that'll be helpful, of course, getting some things, but, but wait a second, I mean, obviously there's a grocery component to it, if you go to the one downtown, you can see that.
Yeah, but what Target, the one?
But, but, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, the one with that, with the one, Sip and Van Weggman, they were reasonable, they would take you if you were older person or not older, they had vans that would take you home. And for a couple of dollars, you didn't, you didn't give them a couple of dollars, that's all. They knew the area, we had Sandy, they bought generators and they put lights, outlets for everybody to use to plug in their phone. There was a community, um, um, shop, shopping center. That's what I'm talking about, Target is not gonna do that for us.
Target probably won't do that for you.
No, Target ain't gonna do that.
Yeah.
They hired people, they hired people in the community, everybody hired, worked, lived in that area.
Yeah. I, I, I think your point, Tom, Tom, yeah. Tom, Tom mentioned, so on, on the supermarket front, I, I know for a fact that there are one or two supermarket big operators that are very interested in being in Journal Square, okay? And until leases are signed, I can't speak to that, but, but that, that is, the reality, I don't know whether it'll solve what you just touched on, to be perfectly honest with you, okay? With regards to the affordable housing, they have been advocating for it, I, I am more supportive of their plan as it relates to the affordable housing component. It was amended in the council and, and scaled back a little bit. And that's a conversation around affordable housing, but, but the way New Jersey laws work, and this is not a Jersey City specific law, is that it does a lot to protect property right of the owner. So when you have a house or an apartment or a development site that is entitled for whatever it's entitled to, you can't then go back to them and mandate affordable housing without giving them, to compensate them something for the cost. And so, like, it's illegal to do, so it's not our place to do that.
But being that you're friends with them, you could talk to them. Except they haven't, oh, you've come from New York?
I'm not making the people that have affordable housing do what they're supposed to. They don't know how to grievance to people that's in the community that's doing them wrong, making these options without.
Let's go to twenty-six, if you wanna hear about our affordable housing plan, sign up to the newsletter, 76th and Journal Square is not covered on the current one. Number twenty-six. Over there.
Hello, everybody, I'm Ebony, I grew up in Jersey City, I'm in the Greenville section. I also had a question about, as this lady said, about the affordable housing, you did say, Mayor, how you doing so far?
Good, how are you?
You did say that 1% of our taxes does go to a lot of the funding that y'all building. Before today, I didn't even know what the hell a Pompadour was, let me just say that. But I just think a lot of these kids in our neighborhood, they don't have a lot of jobs, they don't have no, um, a lot of training for these kids. And I'm more for the kids because I have three of them. And I think I have, yeah, I probably have a million more because a lot of them are friends with my kids. And I'm also working in a school where I've actually seen, I'm, I'm working in the high school where I've actually seen, um, these schools have sewing classes, they have cooking classes, they have gymnastics. They have so many things where, as though opposed to where we have to go out.
Right.
Just to, yes, just to get our children to participate with a lot of these things and they're not even affordable. So I wanna know what is it that you can help with that can help our children and job training programs get up? And like you said again with the affordable housing, 1% of our money goes towards something, that's what you said. You said 1% of our dollar taxes go towards funding, so I think 1% or whatever percent that y'all can help out with our top tax dollars should go to a lot of these kids.
Yeah.
Recreation.
I, I, yes. The council has been pushing correct centers in other wards, so it's a separate conversation, but that is front and center of the conversations that some of them have expressed, Mira, Denise, Amy in particular. A lot of the after-school programs that you see in Paris are particularly younger kids around multimedia stuff, so. And, and the council has expressed initially on this, around free of charge and membership and how we relate to Jersey City people in order to encourage them to come. And, and that is all something that we're supportive of, so I don't think we're in a different place on any of that stuff.
Can I just say that in the project in Jersey City, we're gonna create like a teen space, like a young adult lounge, which is free for all young adults and they'll have like equipment on hand to do, create podcasts, films, so sewing machines, computers, all kinds of equipment, 3D printers on hand for them to use and it's free. So we're doing that and also the schools will be coming for free, obviously, to do activities every morning, like, kind of trying to get as many school classes as we can. We'll be going out to schools too, to do activities with schools, so it's a big part of our programming, okay, the, yeah. The youth component, yeah.
And where will that be at?
At the, in the Pompidou, in the Jersey City Pompidou Center.
So, yeah, there's, there's two things, there's, there's two floors out of the four that are dedicated to really community space, there's the always, if you go, if you go to the location in Paris and if you, the problem with the location at the Pathside, and it was an ongoing conversation, is that they, they, they're very focused on this concept of a forum, which is a community space on the ground floor that is active, whether it's public speakers or musicians or artists, however that is, it's programmed in a way that's constantly engaged. And the original Pathside building, we were opening up the ground floor open on both sides, but the outdoor component of it didn't really exist, okay? This, and we were trying to kind of shoehorn it in and we were gonna make it work. This, this plan has two spaces towards community space, the ground floor obviously will remain similar to that concept because it's very important for community engagement. And then there's a whole floor dedicated to classroom space and multimedia spaces, predominantly focused on youth, teenagers. If, if you look at the location in Paris, it has a high, high emphasis on that. And, and we spent some time visiting that to kind of dig into it, but it's around sewing and multimedia and podcasts and creation of that stuff because that's what kids, you gotta meet them where they are and, and they're very, very deliberate around that. And so this would be the same, it's a very important part of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I just want, and also we're, they're doing a lot of programming for free, so DJ concerts, readings, art history classes, free events for everyone to come in and I kind of drop by, hang in, you know, how's the word, drop in, hang, hang in, hang in place, politics, so that people could come and go and, you know, take that opportunity of just being in the space and taking what's happening. So it's, the, yeah, the idea is to be open to community, for people to come in, enjoy what's there and then leave if they want to, or maybe go see some art if they want to as well. But it's, a lot of it is geared towards youth.
Twenty-seven.
Kevin. Hey, guys, I'm Kevin. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out today and thank you for JSQCA, Tom, I've done what you've done, it's not easy, I appreciate it and thank you everybody for coming out. So I think the conversation about the programming and things is very interesting and I would love to hear more about that, but boringly, I really wanna ask about budget. Mayor Phillip, if you could give everybody in the room just to kind of level set, most people here don't know what the Jersey City budget is, right? It's about 600 million, what percentage are we currently spending like cultural affairs, how much do we already spend on that? And then, I know you said you're in negotiations, but we're talking about the upfront costs and the vote is about an abatement and 100,000 square feet. What would the ongoing costs be in your negotiations with Central Pompadour? What would the ongoing costs be and what percentage of the city budget do you think that would be?
The, the, the best thing Kevin to do on that is I will provide that to Tom so it's accurate. I'm gonna send him over when we leave here, the outline budget for the 10-year projections, you can see what it is and then obviously back into the, the percentage of the municipal budget, which is relatively very small and it extrapolates over 10 years, so, so you can see it there and he'll distribute it to everybody here, I think that's the best way to be exact on it. And then the cultural affairs budget we'll get in conjunction with the Arts Trust Fund budget and what we distribute, I mean, I could get that to him today as well.
All right, twenty-eight.
Okay, thank you. Hello, thank you for coming, or having this, my name is Jennifer Kane, I live in Journal Square and I'm president of the Friends of Spears, Spears Cemetery. So I see both sides, I see how the Pompadour could be beneficial for Jersey City and New Jersey in general and that competition of New York and what it could bring in to the community. I also see, living in the community, just how crowded we are now and three, Journal Square hasn't even opened up yet. And everybody's late for school, everybody's late for work, the traffic is unbelievable. And so, like, it's just, what's the projection? Because what happens is, is I think what looks good on paper isn't always good in the real world.
Yeah.
You know, and so there could be a little conflict there.
I, I think that's fair. A lot of the, a lot of the construction components which leads to the traffic issues are burdensome, I mean, I'm the first to acknowledge that, it's a big problem. We had a meeting on it this week and we allocated some additional officers to be checking permits because the feeling is that some of the vendors, or PSENG in particular, shut down streets that they're not permitted to shut down and we felt at the time that the police officers should be doing a better job of enforcement of those permits. There's a conversation this week, whether the impact, I got a report yesterday on how many of those shops, they shut down yesterday, which was 17 citywide. It's, I guess we gotta monitor it next week to see kind of how that alleviates pressure, okay? You're tasked with a challenge as it relates to starting people on work later, okay, which limits the hours of the day, which limits income for people and lengthens the project indefinitely versus trying your best to manage a tough situation right now, okay? So that's, that's the, that's the back and forth on this. On, on 808, what's important again is that this is not a question on whether construction will commence there, right? Construction, fortunately or unfortunately, is starting at that project in the near term, the project is financed and the project is by right as it relates to what they're building. So, so that is a reality of kind of what is happening regardless. So as it relates to the path, you know, there's a real conversation, we do our best to push the path and the Port Authority, but I do believe that it's a reactive agency, they've never planned proactive, when the pressure is so much that they have to make accommodations and they make accommodations, but they don't do it thinking, ah, this is coming and Journal Square is gonna have this and that's a problem, but they do react ultimately. We have accommodated parking there, I think it's 350 spots, I could be a little bit off on that, but it's roughly that as it relates to car traffic coming to visit there. But the anticipation is largely Jersey City people, number one, and two, people taking path and mass transit. So when I said that there's a window of opportunity around this one project, again, timing issues, is because we, if you remove it from the core, okay, and too far from mass transit, it creates other problems on vehicular traffic or in visitors. We have a line item that's a conservative estimate based on visitors, okay? And, and again, all of those things are predicated on being close to mass transit. And fortunately or unfortunately, there's not a lot of opportunity in that core anymore to actually build something in proximity. So that's the reason why we're looking at this timing, it's not something that, do I wish that we had six months, of course I do, right? I mean, would it change four years worth of conversations? Probably not, but the reality is we're in this window based on circumstances, not choice. And there's an opportunity in front of us and, and I just wanna go back to the first thing I said, is that I was out of this problem in theory. I, it was, the governor removed the funding, there was no personal benefit, political benefit for me to be in front of here, you here with people saying personal things, I'm responding personally, people clapping. There's only downside for me, there's no upside, some people will leave here saying, I hate that guy and some people will leave there being like, eh, whatever, right? Like, it's not gonna change anybody anyway, there's only downside. And the reason I'm here is because I know, it's not even a question, I know that in five years and 10 years, this will not even be a conversation that people remembers. Everybody will say, this is a huge community benefit that people will cherish, if I didn't believe that, why would I be here? It's only risk for me, I got everything to lose in this situation, nothing gave, the governor got me out of that situation. The governor took away the money and whether it was political or not political, it's gone and nobody blamed me. They said the governor took away the money, which is true, it happened during a political situation, true, that's it, the end of it.
Twenty-nine, just stand in the front.
Hi, my name is Pat Halston, my building administrator is here, I'm so glad to see him. I came in curious about this, I'm a big museum goer and it hurts me, living in Jersey City, that we did have that one wonderful museum that I know the city didn't run and when that faded, it was sad. Now we have Mana and they're kind of changing a little bit of what they're offering too, so that's an ongoing thing and we have these wonderful murals. I have kind of two issues, I know that when the city offered a murals calendar and I called for it, it wasn't available. And I called for it when it was posted, nothing. With J-Cast, what I'm finding is a lot of times when we have activities, it's too packed. Like the mural tour impacted on other artistic venues that were taking place all around the same time. So you either did the mural tour or you had to do something else, it's too concentrated. So I think as a city, we need to do a little bit better. It also makes me feel good seeing some of the artists in the room, some of whom I know, and, and it's just nice. So, one question I have, since you took the time to fly in, you said you've been taking time learning about the city. So I'm curious to know, based on the conversations that you've had with the residents here, what are your impressions? What have you learned about our history and how are you gonna tailor fit it to the city, okay? The other question I have, schools struggle and so, as a resident, we're supporting this, like, I'm very close to the Newark Museum, I don't get benefits going free there, okay? But as a Jersey City resident, we're bringing this museum, it needs to be free for us. But as a Jersey City resident, we're bringing this museum. It needs to be free for us. That should be a benefit. That should be a right.
So, your first question is how, what have I landed from Jersey City? I have, I suppose I've been working for three years. I had to bring in Charles Beaton to this conversation because there are actually two of us and he actually lives in New York. So he's been adding all the groundwork with me and for me to work together. You know, I think that what's interesting is how can we do exhibitions that reflect concerns or questions or conversations that are happening here in Jersey City, but also in New Jersey and in North America? And that will resonate with you. So your history, obviously the diversity of your communities is really interesting for us to work with that and to think about what that means in terms of the concerns that you have, the stories that you have, and what will work with you in terms of artworks that we'll show to you. So, building a program, a program is about thinking, about themes and exhibitions that will interest the people that who are living on site. But it's also about bringing maybe what, you know, as to maybe your more European perspective, maybe our point of view on things and learning from what you think about issues. I'm thinking, I don't know, about immigration, identity, all kinds of issues that, you know, we're thinking about in museums a lot anyway. So learn from you and bring what we have as well from our history and our perspective and how those two can come together and create a dialogue. But it's really about dialogue and it's about transmission and it's about exchanging. So all the programming that we're thinking about with Charles and we've been thinking about exhibitions here at the opening, several years of exhibitions in fact, from our collection, but not only, and how we can create, work around themes so that it be, that it's kind of interwoven with your own history. So we've even been thinking about how can we bring in the history of Jersey City to resonate with exhibitions that we'd like to show here too. So we've been working with the public library a lot, looking at their archives as well on history, on Jersey City history, the history of also immigration that you have here, which is obviously a big part of who you are. And how we can build that into our themes and how we can build that into the artwork and how we can show the artworks that we have in the collection that would echo those stories and those, those concerns that you have here. So it's really about dialogue for us. And it's, so I'm talking about the collection, but obviously it's not just about the collection. It's also about working with artists here as well. And how we can, perhaps how they can look at our collection and what they can, you know, do with our collection. How can they create from our collection? What works can they imagine from our collection? It's really, you know, bringing these two together. So our collection is 20th century art from like early 20th centuries till today. So we have contemporary artists too. So there are opportunities also to work with them. I mean, the artworks that we have, so. Did I, I hope that answered your question?
And look at the second part, the budget contemplated being free for Jersey City residents.
Yeah, right. This is something that we're talking about and the policy for being free for Jersey City residents, yeah. This is obviously a discussion also with Jersey City, with the mayor. But it's definitely something that is a priority for us and that we would, we would want to put in place. Yeah.
That's Pompidou Place. Isn't it going to be in Journal Square?
It's.
Yeah, they've got a Lowe's Theater.
Yeah, behind the Lowe's Theater.
What are they bringing to the Greenville section? It's all the way up here. What are they bringing to the Greenville section? Everything is up here.
But I suppose, yeah, yeah, I get that. So we have a lot of, I think what's interesting about what we want to do is that, yeah, sure, we'll have our site here, but we'll also be doing a lot of outreach. So working with schools, going to schools, going to, you know, retirement homes as well. We have like, we can have like a mobile, like a truck that we would take around. We do this in Paris. We have like a truck that we take around to the suburbs in Paris. Even like, you know, as far as we can go. And that we bring our activities to people who can't come to the Pompidou in the central Paris. So we could do a similar, so we'd like to do a similar outreach here as well.
They consider the mental health as well?
Yeah, mental health, people with special needs, yeah. All of, yeah.
Oh, that's good. Number thirty.
I'm thirty. Would you also be providing school kits? Because I know.
What was that?
The New York Public Library, they have art kits. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, school kits, we have, yeah. And so we have all of this actually in the Pompidou in Paris, but they're obviously for French children and French culture, which is not the same as American culture. It's different. So I think we would adapt those kits. We have a huge education department in Paris and they are working on school kits for children in Jersey City and schools in Jersey City.
Mia.
Mia Skanga, long-term resident of Jersey City downtown and here in McGinnley Square. And also, in the hundreds of city council meetings in years past, this is like kind of reminiscent. But anyway, I'm concerned about if the city's going to be able to afford it. First of all, we had the Lowe's Theater and that whole renovation. And I think you just mentioned that they finally got the loan for that.
Correct. Close.
How much is that?
I don't know. Joe Bateman would have been better. The entire renovation is about $120 million renovation.
All right. And how much are the taxpayers paying on that?
Um, I'll get you the exact number because it's like a separation on that, but we retain ownership of that, of course.
Right, yeah. Well, you own the building to begin with. Right, you own the building to begin with. So we're talking about 120 million there.
Correct.
I don't know. I haven't looked at, they have called it an annual debt statement. I haven't looked at that. But it's in the hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of debt that the city already has. So I'm looking at an article that was just written this summer and it had to do with Patsy, okay? Which, by the way, is only 5,400 square feet. 5,400 square feet. We're now talking about 100,000. That's huge. That's huge. It's a big difference, right? Now, they, they did an analysis and an audit. That's why they killed the funding. Because they found a lot of the money, 22 million beside, which includes the cost of the building, which is 10 or 12 million. A lot of it, I'll quote it to you. He said.
Who are you quoting? I think it's important.
Uh, Tom Neff, who was the director of the Division of Local Government Services for years.
Go ahead. What's his current role?
Right. I'm not sure what his current role is. Oh, Budget Director. Yeah, State Budget Director, okay? But he used to be the Division of Government Services, which if you don't know, all the financing, anything you do on any level within government in the state of New Jersey would go through his department, okay? So he's a finance guy. Reported gross excess and waste in the city's use of funds attributed to the absence of oversight and accountability and a redevelopment project that exceeded its scope. No cost-benefit analysis was done at the time. Noting that it was envisioned to be an extraordinarily expensive world-class museum. He estimated, which seems a little high for 5,400, because I hope it's not true, operating costs would exceed 200 million at the rate they were going at that time, all right? Now Jersey City gave estimates that they would run in a $19 million loss. This is on 5,400 square feet. $19 million loss. They could only come up with $4 million in revenue and $23 million in operating expenses for 5,400 square feet. We're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars that are already on the books. Now we're talking about, what did you say, about 123 million? And as for the Pompidou fee, which the mayor has been hedging tonight, they discussed that like a year or two ago and they even mentioned it here. Among costs cited are $33 million to Centre Pompidou, including $10 million to use the name for five years, all right? And $40 million paid to consultants some hired to find other consultants, all right? Oh, and that was one of the big complaints. Nothing was getting done. They just hired more consultants who did more consultants who did more consultants, right? Which to me sounds like a slush fund, you know? That's the way you kick back to your, you know, all those people who contributed to your campaign. They're already strapped. They're strapped.
That's why they're leaving.
And so to add more debt when nothing has been bought out, you didn't even think out the Patsy. You said you've been working on this project since 2019. I don't think the city and the taxpayers are prepared for this huge amount of operating expenses. If it's $23 million for 5,400, how much is it going to be for 100,000 square feet or 85? I even heard that was quoted. We're not even sure what the square footage is.
And look at the stores we're losing.
But someone else mentioned 85,000. So, so the state pulled out. They thought this was going to be a huge, there was no control, no fiscal controls in place. They didn't want to take, they didn't want to take the chance. They pulled out. So you come back here with this deal, which of course is a two-30-year tax abatement. So we know what that has done for the city. It's overburdened the one to four family homeowners, is what it's done. And rushing it through. If they've been waiting this long to start building on that property, they can wait some longer. And I, I've been to dozens and dozens of city council meetings. Sometimes I was like one of the few people to speak against it for years. Let me tell you, no developer wants to walk away from a tax abatement because it's a sweetheart deal. The public needs more time. And we need to see some real numbers, some real numbers.
Can I, can I, you done? All right. So I'm not going to go back and forth on this. I think like the important point here, okay, is adding a little context to what Mia said. First of all, the building is not 5,400 square feet, okay? Any reasonable person looks at that building, it's not 5,400.
Or maybe 5,400.
It's 75,000 square feet, okay?
No, I'm talking about Patsy.
Patsy building, okay? Hundred percent. Patsy building. We've gone through this out loud. You look at the building, it's not 5,400. Secondly, the letter she references was written by Republican Senator Mike Testa, who is a candidate for governor, in conjunction with Tom Neff, who you referenced. And his title is the Budget Director of the State Republicans, okay? Now, they have, he represents South Jersey. And this is in a political context, this letter. It's not in an actual context. He's not a neutral person in this. He's drawing scum. No, no, no. I mean, you look at, he works in a political party and clearly he only surfaced because I am also in a political capacity as it relates to statewide office. I think a reasonable person.
He wants the documentation.
His title, his responsibility is for the, he's not a neutral person. You omitted that little fact, which is pretty important.
He's going to study. He's going, the guy has been in the government for decades.
Let me, let me.
He's not going to jeopardize his reputation.
A hundred percent. You omitted the fact.
No, we actually saw the letter. Aaron Brown got a copy of it.
Let me, let me, let me, let me, you omitted a key fact, Mia, on who that is. Now let me tell you who's been involved, okay? The state comptroller reviewed our procurement process prior to, so non-political. State comptroller reviewed our procurement process for the Pompidou. The Office of the Governor was involved in perpetuity from the beginning until that letter that came in March. The Office of the First Lady, the local finance board, the Secretary of State, the state comptroller, the New Jersey Council on the Arts, EDA. All of those said everything was fine. Everything was fine up until March. Now you reference an article from the Republican State Director via a Republican Senator that people allege, wait a second, but, but Mike Testa, who is a potential, you could Google it, and likely also a Republican candidate for governor. So I just want people to view it through the context that it is. Maybe it's true. I would dispute all of those things, okay? Because I don't think any of that is true as a matter of fact. But the important is, who's writing it? And you just omitted like a key fact on where that is.
But they get the documentation from your people, all the influences and everything.
Absolutely. I just outlined for you who was, okay, I mean, we're going to go back and forth on this. Yeah, I mean, you omitted Mia.
The projections are done by your people. The projections are done by your people.
You omitted, you omitted a key fact.
There's nothing to admit he did an audit.
Mia, he's a political person working for a political party. All right, we're going back and forth. All right. We go to the next question.
There are reports available that Mia's referencing if you want to.
Exactly. Google it and, and reference who wrote it. I would, I would urge you all to do that and Google who those people are. I think that's a fair thing to say. I would urge you all to do that.
Well, when we saw the Journal, I was.
Next, next question, thirty-one.
Right here.
Yeah, Jersey Times. Thanks for coming. Thirty-one, you're next.
I'm with the Jersey City Times. Thank you guys again for, for making this time. I just wanted to clarify first, is the developer that said that the city cannot have any more time to make this, this decision?
Yeah, the developer is on a time constraint that they outlined to us and that they need a decision on direction that we're going because of their financing.
And did you ask or push back on that, saying, we as a city need more time on this?
Yeah, I, I, I think that we've had conversations extensively on whether that's a reasonable thing or not and what we're discussing here today. And so the short answer is, we've had conversations and that's kind of the window.
And there is no other alternative spot or opportunity to focus?
No, no.
Okay. Is that just me clarifying?
Before. It, it was, it was the Patsy building, which is across the street from us. Yeah, with the mayor. Just for point of clarification, with the mayor, it's, before was it? It's okay. We're a lively group here. Just for clarification, if anything's out, the Patsy building next across the street from here was the original location when the state pulled this funding. That was no longer viable option for the city. Is that right? All right. Thirty-one.
One last clarifying and one more open-ended. Thank you guys again. Appreciate it. So the Patsy building, there was money already put into that project, engineering and architectural consulting. I guess, what would you tell our readers and the city's residents as to why should you trust your financial judgment based on the fact those dollars, I guess ultimately were wasted or?
I, I would dispute. We sat with the Jersey Journal on, on Wednesday and Anissa's not here today, but we outlined to them that the overwhelming majority of the dollars are transferable to this project on the design work that we did. So I would, I would dispute that way. And when people talk about the $20 million that we've spent up till now, that includes the cost of acquiring the building, which is an asset that we own of greater value today.
Can you please elaborate on transferable? I know you did say that before.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would have you speak to Anissa, who's not here today. She had a family commitment and couldn't make it. So she, happy to connect her to you.
Okay. Last clarifying question. Thank you again for answering many of probably the same questions multiple times. The build-out cost is of the 100,000 square feet. That's solely the city.
That'll be covered by the city. It's our asset ultimately.
Hundred percent.
How much?
We don't know what we're building yet. That's the, that's the reality. We haven't started the design work unless we have a space.
And what's the percentage of the operating cost that falls onto the city?
I mean, the best thing I could do is, the best thing I could do is send you the budget, but it's.
I appreciate it.
And in that, in that context, it's roughly 1.25 million plus 2 million, so it's 3.25 out of a budget of 22 million. So if you do the math, it's probably roughly 9%.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And just on the Patsy building, we haven't polled the Journal's community yet or our board, but as a personal note, I would not like to see that sold off for development or pay for this project if we have other need. Thirty-one. Going once. Thirty-two. All right, moving right along now. Thirty-three.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I live in Ward B and I've been here for nine years. I am a huge advocate for this project. I attended one of the early community meetings about it with OMA. I also own a business that works in the cultural field. Like we do basically emerging technology projects that end up in museums and other types of creative experiences around the world. I've been doing that work as a producer and a technical director for a number of years. So for my family and for like the residents of Jersey City, like I am so unbelievably excited for us to have this type of cultural asset here. I don't like trucking my five-year-old into Manhattan to go to other museums. Like I tried to take him to the MoMA once and it was honestly not an experience that I am going to repeat anytime soon. And that, you know, my family and I are super excited to see what that could bring to the city. I understand like all the hand wringing about budget and knowing what I know about being involved in these projects, sometimes on like the consulting side, when you're talking about like the infrastructure. There is like an element to the budgeting process that's always kind of aspirational. And I think that at this stage of the project, that's like kind of okay. I think that there's been some actually pretty savvy maneuvering to try to create the possibility for the project and sort of understand overwhelmingly how like we are sort of at a crossroads with it. And that like if we can create the possibility for the space, then there's a future for this type of project in Jersey City. And I think that the maneuvering that the administration has done has on, you know, from what I've witnessed, been actually fairly savvy. So I think that there's still time after this for the specifics of the museums, build-out budget, the operating budget and like what the financials of the museum or the cultural center will be like moving forward. There's still time for all of that to work. And I do believe that the draw and the mission of the Pompidou is like such a unique and like compelling fit for Jersey City. But just to run out the logic of what happens like after this meeting on Wednesday. Wednesday. So let's say that the city acquires the space. What are the conditions around that? Does it have to be cultural space? Is that part of the pilot? Or does the city now own that real estate as just like a real estate asset? That, let's say that a year into planning, two years into planning, the project falls through. The city owns that piece of real estate. Can they turn around and sell it? Can they turn around and lease it and then profit from the lease? Like I know that you guys have done that back of the napkin math to get to this point. Can we talk a little bit about how like that limits the risk, that sort of de-risks the project from a real estate standpoint and give that back to the citizens in a way that will help them understand it?
Yeah, I, I, I think Mike is probably the best person to speak to that. The next steps also, so the vote on Wednesday is to acquire the property with the goal, our collective goal of moving in this direction, okay? But we're retaining the asset. So two things happen immediately after that if it gets approved. The first is that we start a conversation and continue that with the Santra Pompidou to solidify that relationship because I think that's important immediately. We have a home, so there's no reason we wouldn't move forward immediately on that. The second part, the second part of that is that special improvement tax, which goes in front of the council. So there is a tax called via SID, a special improvement tax, that's being proposed to levy on some of the buildings in the area. And that's a conversation with the council. What does that look like? How much is it per unit? What type of buildings does that include? Is it higher than six stories? Is it higher than five stories? And what does that gross ultimately towards our budget? That moves simultaneously as well as the two next steps through this process. And I heard you about the DEI, I heard you about the sustainability. Those would all be included in that, in that contract. And then on the asset, we could sell it, we could lease it. It's our contract. It's our asset what we want to do with it. I don't know, Mike, if you want to add anything on that?
I think the mayor described it well, but the, I mean, we all live, work in this region and we know what the value of real estate is. So there could be a time in the future where we need it as a public asset. There could be a time in the future where it would be sold as a commercial enterprise. But none, none of those options are foreclosed. It's not an asset that goes away. It stays and it remains valuable.
So if I could just like clarify that, what that means is like the city is basically buying real estate for like roughly five million dollars a year out of future tax revenue, right? You own it. It's a real estate asset that you own. And if this as a cultural project falls through, you have recourse to do something else with the space that would, you could either sell it and basically get money that you didn't have back in the budget, or you can lease it out for, or sell it for commercial purposes. And so that's like the city's recourse with the property, right? So it's not like, we actually don't lose anything by acquiring this property now. If the, you know, all of the other things that have to fall into place for the Pompidou Center to come into being, don't, it's not like the city will have lost that much in trying. They will actually have gained like a potentially really valuable asset in Journal Square. I know that like, you know, in twenty years, when I'm standing in Journal Square, and I've been here for nine years, but I will be here in twenty years, like I know that for a fact. So I think that in twenty years, I don't want to be looking at like, you know, a Target, a Best Buy, or like other like, you know, big box retail BS in Journal Square that would be capable of occupying a hundred thousand dollar space. I want to be looking at like the fruits of this investment that are going to be for the community in Jersey City, public space with public services, with public programming that benefits us all into the future.
Thank you. Thirty-four.
Hi, Merritt Burns. I'm the Executive Director of Bard House. Thank you all so You know, my biggest concern is just that we're a relatively small city, three hundred thousand people. New York City obviously has a ton of anchor institutions and then smaller cultural centers. And they, they all survive, but of course, you know, the pandemic did shut down a ton of smaller cultural centers, the size of Bard House, the size of Nimbus. You know, it's a struggle to survive every single year. It's a struggle to make our budget. And I just worry in a landscape and in a region where arts funding is so limited, how do we survive when the Pompidou is coming in and is going to be funded at such a high rate? And how do the rest of us keep going? Because it feels like you're going to suck up all of the oxygen, all of the resources. And I don't know where there's space for us.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to give that to you after this. I, I think that, first of all, Merritt, you did a great job. And I know that you're always struggling to kind of make it work in a tough situation. And the city has tried our best to be a resource, whether it's helping with the space or whether it's the Arts Trust Fund or whatnot on programming. I mean, we try and you could always say we can do better, but I think we do better than a lot of cities, not better than every city, et cetera. The goal of, we, we have a very finite universe today of donors in this city, right? And there is the corporate community, which doesn't engage maybe as much as they should. And I've had that expression because maybe a lot of them don't have their headquarters here or whatnot. So they don't look at Jersey City in the same way as I think they should. And you have a developer community that gives money, sometimes not at the rate that they should, okay? Relying solely on the development community in Jersey City is not really a sustainable model by any stretch of imagination for anybody. I think we need to, and we need to grow that pot. It's something that I alluded to earlier. We need to attract more attention, grow the pot. And it's important to us and to them that they are part and partners with you and Nimbus and the great organizations to highlight that fact. I think one of the reasons that they've been here for three or four years involved in the community is trying to figure out how to build that network because it's important to them ultimately as much as it's important to us. That, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to paraphrase something that she said originally when we first met and they started to learn the community a little bit. Their, their peer, as they said earlier, is the MoMA around the world, okay? That's the Santra Pompidou's peer, right? And, and in many ways, this is their North American location. It's a big honor and a big significant thing for Jersey City, but they're entering directly the MoMA's market, okay? So you're talking about the New York metro market. They're not looking, they're not going to be in Chicago, they're not going to be in Austin, Texas. They're in Jersey City. And, and they were very conscious of the fact that what they said originally is that they are not gonna do a better job than the MoMA here by just hanging more Picassos on the wall. That, that's not the mousetrap that they're looking to do. It's more of a community amenity and a community resource and building a fabric in the community that has components of that, but really is intertwined with the stuff that you are doing. They spent a lot of time on that. So I hear you on the trepidation. I really believe that we're going to be growing the pot. The donor universe that is interested in doing this sort of thing is a little bit of a different universe that's doing, let's say, what Art House is doing, just based on scale. And, and the task that we have is how do we get that person to also be interested in other things in Jersey City?
I think it does, you know, obviously I think there is a lot of confusion about exactly what the Pompidou is going to look like. There are some folks who think it's old masters or Picasso. And you're telling us now that it's definitely going to be a community centers, there'll be lots of free programming. I understand that. I think that's actually more worrying for me and a lot of the folks in the community because that does feel in direct competition with what we're doing.
I, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I, I-
And how, how do we compete with something funded, funded thirty-two million times that we are-
I, and I, I should have corrected it. I mean, I really should have four years ago. I, I let it go because I thought it was the easiest thing to comprehend as it relates to what they do, right? As it relates to the masters and, and the type of artwork. But like, if you were to Google it, right, and look at it outside of this and do a little research on how it's intertwined in Paris, you would see that it's less about the, the exhibition component and more about the community space component. I hear you on the community stuff, so I'm going to turn it over to Anna.
But, but I guess the question is for you, Mayor. You know, how, how are you going to make sure that the local art scene doesn't get totally swallowed up by this?
Yeah. Well, let, let, let me say, let me say this. I think that, I think that that's, that's fair and it's important whether it's seats on the board, intertwining the artwork and the artists into the spaces that the Pompidou has. So like, how does it work that they're able to attract people that you're probably not able to attract? Based on brand. I think that's a fair thing. So how do they incorporate Art House in a way that somebody visiting this facility, because they're conscious of the brand, gets exposed to you, right? How do you do that in a way that's thoughtful, that benefits you? And I think that's at the core of the mission over here because that's ultimately the community component.
Yeah, so it's about working together. It's about communal programming. It's about giving spaces to you in the, you know, in the site you have here. It's about creating links with what you're doing in the Art House, which is great, by the way. So I think we need to talk and we need to meet up and we need to find ways together how we can have a collaboration and a partnership. That just seems the obvious way to me. We did a big event here called the Night of Ideas. I don't know if you came to that, but over fifty percent of the people that were participating were from New Jersey. And it was really like a blueprint for what we want to do later on. There wasn't any art. There was a collection of here. I had some kind of community collection because it was in here. But it was really about discourse and it was about community and it was about local cultural figures, but also, you know, we have Bike GC here, we have the Library, we had Rashad Wright as well, actually. So Ridley Roy, who's a, has a dance company here. So it's about working together. So it's about conversation. So we, we need to collaborate.
Night of Ideas had thousands of people come. It was like a really big success. So it was here without a location and to test out a little bit of the community programming and the appetite for that. It's something that they did elsewhere in the world and they decided to do it here. And it was a huge success with people and it was partnerships highlighting local community.
But I think that's exactly what I'm getting at.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like, we produce Rashad, we produce Ridley Roy.
Correct, correct.
How are we supposed to compete then? Why would they come to us? Why, why, you know what I'm saying? Like, and so I think if, if the, if the idea is that, similar to the sustainability question and the DEI question, that those things would go into some kind of MOU or contract, there needs to be, I think, some contract about the local art scene because we've been here for decades serving the community.
Merritt, it's totally fair. And, and I will tell you that on the Lowe's component, it was the same sort of thing. Like the Friends of the Lowe's asked for a specific number of days for community programming and that's factored into the contract, right? So while there's going to be Harris Blitzer that's running it, right, the prudential partnership there to bring in big, then big three thousand seat type entertainment to fill it, it was factored into the contract that the Friends of the Lowe's have X number of days per year and et cetera, et cetera, right? So it's totally fair point and, and something we'll do. I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thirty-five. We have a, a back number. Can we do, do we do back numbers? I don't know.
No.
Sorry, I was, I had to leave and then I was looking for my parking ticket and I found my number.
Oh, awesome.
But my name is Malita and I live in Greenville and I'm proud of it because I know that there's a lot of people that really flourish, thrive in Greenville. And I want to speak to you specifically because I am here with you. I know that there is programming that's going on at the local library. They do coding at the Earl Morgan Library. I also know that J.C. Powell in Greenville is also actively working and doing children's programming. I myself am working with the library and doing music related, art related, poetry projects there. So get in touch with the Earl Morgan Library. The branch manager is Francina. I am happy to hear that you are here from Paris and that you understand the necessity for incorporating the community and having this be an extension of the library. In fact, I was at a library event yesterday with this woman here too. And we were talking about how the library in Jersey City in particular serves as a hub. It's a cultural center. It's beyond the books. It's beyond the classroom. It's an extension of the classroom. I am for the arts and I support this project because I believe that people, women, children, men, people of all ages cannot live on bread alone. The reason why Jersey City is so diverse and so attractive, why people are migrating here is because we are a cultural society. The Jersey City Arts Council was created and is supporting a lot of the initiatives of the people that are here with us. It serves as a model. They are working towards this and it is a work in progress. I am proud to be part of that process. I was proud to be here for the Night of Ideas to continue to hear your initiatives, to continue to be involved and have a say in what my community, Greenville, and their involvement. I love what Christine said, that she is willing to not just bring shuttles to JCAST, but I imagine the Pompidou collaborating and using that shuttle service to bring people from Greenville to the Pompidou. But I also love what the Liberty Science Center does, which is it goes back and forth. As an educator, I can tell you that I have invited them to come to my classroom. Children have come dissected cow eyes. It sounds gross, but they have a STEM program. So sometimes it's a back and forth where the establishment comes, the mountain comes to Mohammed and Mohammed comes to the mountain. And that with the Jersey City Art Council, with the help of Cultural Affairs, with smart people like you and the mayor and everyone else involved, with the support of the community, we are all smart and creative people. We can make it possible. That is not to say that I do not want to listen to the plight of the people. Yes, we need affordable housing. We need food. We need supermarkets. We need all of that. We need all of that. But children are the future and they are the voice of the people and they can speak on that flight within those realms. So I just wanted to not leave and I'm happy that I found my ticket because as an educator, as an artist, as a poet, as a person that understands the needs of everyday people, the salt of the earth, I still believe in this project and working collaboratively. And I really, really do invite you to be part of the conversation. Visit Greenville, get to know us. And I'm here because I want to be part of the process. I want to be part of this innovative, forward-thinking, really ambitious project. I believe in it. And I think other cities are doing really great things, bold things. It takes a lot of guts and a lot of collaboration. And I'm here for it. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you. And thank you for the transparency because I feel like when, the more we know, the less we fear it. Sometimes it's about fear, but I'm not scared.
Thank you very much. Thirty-five, I think we're up to, thirty-six? Thirty-eight? Thirty-nine?
My name is Dawn Ezel and I live in Ward F, okay? From what I can understand, the city now owns a building.
Not yet. We, we could.
We could, okay? And the only way you're saying that we could is if we partnered with Pompidou?
No.
Okay. Now, if we could still own that building, okay, first of all, Jersey City's overcrowded. My family has zoning is terrible, okay? If you allow this to happen. That's the first thing. Journal Square, you have to take public, me, I have to take public transportation. I don't agree with you blaming it on, on New Jersey Transit because if you rezone it correctly, okay, like other places and allow the buses and the trains and everywhere to get in here like they're supposed to, then you wouldn't have a problem of this going on like this. All these buildings going up, all this other stuff. But that's another- But, that's another day. But what I'm saying is, for low and affordable housing, okay? Affordable housing in Jersey City is not even low-income housing. I think it's twelve hundred dollars a month, I mean twelve, yes, twelve hundred dollars a month. A lot of people that live in Jersey City, that have been here for as long as I have, can still not afford twelve hundred dollars a month, okay? Because you have people now, with their incomes up to a hundred, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, they have raised the amount of rent that people have to pay, according to their income. So, this building, in my estimation, I mean, you know, you can build a museum or whatever, somewhere else. But this building could be used for low and affordable housing income. It would be more conducive, okay? Because everybody keeps on saying, we have a problem, we have a problem. This is a building where it would not be a problem. You haven't done it with the Lowe's, I think somebody said, there's still outstanding money on that. Finish the Lowe's, okay? I was here with Stanley Theater, the Pigs, the Lowe's, all of them, all of them are on, okay? Because you built buildings, you built this, you built that, okay? If you want to do this, do it for the citizens who need the help in Jersey City. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
Forty-one, or forty, forty?
No forties is here.
Forty, forty-one?
Forty-two? Forty-three?
I'm forty-three.
All right.
Russell, Journal Square Association, I'm a longtime resident. So, a, and a big time believer in, in Journal Square, so I got, uh, I'm really excited about kind of the idea of more amenities for Jersey City and Journal Square in particular. Was excited when I sort of first heard the announcement and the idea several years ago. But let me tell you why I'm, I'm not so excited now. The reason I'm not so excited now is, the last time that we spent a bunch of time in, in this community all around a sort of inner Journal Square amenity, was the Homestead pedestrian passage. Anyone here familiar with the, with that plan? Okay, so a bunch of us, you know, in, in communities spent many, many hours working with the community, trying to get feedback on the amenities that we would like for that. The way that that particular real estate deal was structured was much like this one. The benefit to the real estate developers, the, the details around that was, were ironed out first. The, the things that we spent time on in the community around trying to figure out what amenities would we want, that was a, a sort of like a, a single like byline in the, in the original bill before, ordinance before the council, that, that had got agreed to. Since then, myself and, and the, the association has worked hard, working with the developers, working with this, trying to get the city to actually make good on the original promises that were laid out in really nice, sort of, sort of photos and renderings at the time, which we got very excited about. And now, as I say, now for many months and years, we have tried to get the city to actually make good on the plans that were agreed to. The developer says, we're just waiting for the city, the city isn't moving. When I asked the city, Department of Infrastructure, Department of Planning, like, can we get a, a plan around this? Can we put this on the calendar? There's no response even, from the city. And so, I guess my question to you is, you know, why is it that the real estate deal is put front and center as this sort of time-sensitive thing that needs to get signed? And why would this be any different than that?
It's a, it's a good question, Russell. I, I would like to explore with you what components that Tanya and Anisia, because I believe that you're right, that they should be holding the developer there and fulfilling whatever that commitment is. I don't know all the gaps, and probably not for here, but I will follow up on that on Monday, because I think the Homestead is important to what we're trying to do. And, and all of these things are part of the contract that we're discussing as the next step. There's no contract if we don't secure a space, it just doesn't exist ultimately. The conversation is, do you have a place to secure in order to facilitate a contract on? So that, that's the challenge that we're in.
So would you commit to having like a, a meeting with the, the community within the next couple of months? That, that talks about the timeline for that project?
I, I think that, yes, I, I, I think that you guys have brought up some really important things tonight around, or today? Around DEI, around union labor, around sustainability, around Jersey City residents' access, around programming, around what Meredith said, around local artists. Those are all things that are important, and yes, I think the city council shares some of this. Somebody, I know that Mira's expressed some of this, and some of the other council members have expressed some of this. So, yes, the short answer is, assuming that it gets approved hopefully on Wednesday, then we would move into, I would do another community meeting around these sort of things to make sure that we're doing the right thing in our side of the responsibility.
Would you also agree then to have your administration? Because, you know, this, this project was talking about like, you know, ten, thirty years. The, the Homestead, you know, walkway is something that's like, was supposed to be done by now.
Yeah, well, yeah, the last building started construction, but you're right, you're right. The last building is under construction, I think, now, so it's not completed. But, I will, if you send me what you sent to planning today, I will loop in Tanya and Anisia. They're not here, and I'd like to figure out with you where the gap is on that, and I will do that on Monday. I will do that.
Okay, okay.
Thanks, Russell.
Forty-four? Homestead, forty-five? Forty-six? If you have enough, raise your hand.
Fifty-five, can I go?
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. When I first heard that this was coming, I said to my husband, let's move up the hill. One day I will work there, and I will walk to work. Many of us want that great art museum here in Jersey City. As everyone else has said, many people have said today, the fiscal question is what the hangup is. With sky-high taxes and sky-high cost of living, the water expense hikes, the trash costs, we're just concerned about, you know, feeling that we're fiscally sound. How can we feel assured? I have an idea, can we bring in Samuel Pot as a consultant on this project? It seems that he's walked the walk and talked the talk, and he's making it happen for numbers. He could help sort out the questions. How could an art museum be financially set up soundly? And how could we get a proposed contract written and shared and discussed first? I feel like we're fortunate we have the expert right here in the room, and it would be wise to consult with him. I also very much welcome the curator who came from Pompidou, Paris. I do have a question, if one person was coming from Paris today, why didn't the Pompidou send a financial person? I, you know, I, I just, or, or maybe both, you know, I just, I'm curious. I feel like, I want to support this, I want it so badly, so many of us do. But two weeks does feel like it's rushing it through, and more discussions could be had. And like Gilmore said, it could be posted on the city website. Maybe we could put it on hold until we get an outside independent cost auditor review the numbers being proposed, and have that in hand before we vote on it.
So, so, for a financial analyst on every tax abatement, okay? And, and, and that is the person who's sitting all the way to the right, who doesn't work for the city, and there are instances where he says that doesn't make sense, and there are instances where he says that that does make sense, but that is the normal cost of a process that we go through. So, so that is something we do. City has a lot of experts in this. Sam certainly has familiarity, Meredith has certainly has familiarity. There's a lot of people that have done this sort of stuff. And we're committed to more community meetings around this to improve what we include in the project. I couldn't commit to spending or specific consultants, so to speak. I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't be prudent, there's a lot of people involved in this. With regards to the finances, it was my recommendation to have Anna here and Charles, okay? The thought process was that the budget we've outlined, I mean, I sent it to Tom already, so he'll distribute that. And I think it's pretty clear on how that works over the next ten years. And that's what's directly pertinent to the taxpayer. And, and as I said, based on the, the expenses for the taxpayer and how it's structured, it's very, very, very minimal impact. The reason I asked for Anna and Charles is because they've been the point person predominantly on community programming. That's like been the core component of it, and it's been a priority for them. So I thought that that was the most important thing to highlight there. In Paris, they're not focused, they're talking about what our budget and contract is, because there is no budget or contract yet. There's what we face with regards to you, back and forth from the administration and the council to the public, and that's the component that we're providing. The contract is the next step over here, and that's kind of included, and they're based on similar comparisons, like I said, on Malaga, whatever.
Can I just say one thing, because, which goes back to, one of the first things you said is that, because there's been some confusion about the museum team, the team that will be working in the museum. I think a lot of people think that it'll be French, mostly French people coming over and running the museum, and I just want to kind of say that that's not going to be the case, that...
That wasn't my question.
I know it wasn't your question, but I just, we've seen it, I know it wasn't your question. But I just wanted to reassure people that it would be a local team, that, that there'll be like fifty odd people working in the museum, and that they will be recruited locally, I just wanted to...
Thank you, yeah, definitely not my question, but we, I do welcome you, and I actually think a mix would be probably a smart idea, but... Yeah, I just, it's more, um, two years.
You have a community behind us as well, so if you already have been working with us, they're just in Paris.
Yeah.
They're advising us anyway, so I think it's good to have people who actually locally know the place.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, you know, it is mixed anyway.
Thank you, thank you, I, yeah, I just think two weeks is a rush when we're talking about ten-year projections and thirty-year abatements. Thank you.
All right, number fifty? Yes, sorry, uh, forty-eight, sorry, so forty-eight.
Good afternoon, my name is Sonia, and I live, I live right here in Journal Square. I, I don't know if you're aware, but New York City has a lot of cultural institutions, I think about three dozen or so, that are free to attend New Yorkers. The Metropolitan Museum, for example, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, free for anybody from the five boroughs, thirty dollars for me as a Jersey City resident. I was wondering if I could get some sort of commitment that if the Central Pompidou were to open up here, that they would provide free admission for Jersey City residents on all open days, all operating hours, all floors of the building, and, and like, provide access for anybody living here, and, and allow, you know, if there's going to be tourists coming in, that they could provide the majority of the funding, rather than, rather than coming at us.
Yeah, is, is that, I don't want to cut you off, is that the whole question, or is there a second part?
No, just making it, making it sort of be a community asset in earnest, making it a community amenity and a resource for real, not just, you know, once a quarter, or a Friday evening, or, you know, limited times and hours, really free for Jersey City residents, all ages.
So, it, it's not, like, some of the things that you guys touched on, the DEI, the sustainability, this component of it is not a Central Pompidou decision ultimately. It's a city council, administration, back and forth decision. They've expressed their desire to facilitate a lot of this stuff. They've like, in the council, in the caucus, in the previous conversations, Mira's been a part of all of that stuff. They've really expressed that interest. So, again, this stuff goes back to them, and, and ultimately, I'm sure that they're going to ask for this stuff, and, and we will facilitate it. I mean, it is what it is, and I think it's an important thing also for it to be free. And they probably agree, that's an important thing to be free for Jersey City residents.
Thank you.
Fifty? Fifty-one? Fifty-two? Fifty-two?
Fifty-one.
Please say something. I really don't have a clue what to say to, or to voice my opinion to the rest of us. My opinion about the whole matter is that...
Just talking to Michael Oviedo?
The whole matter is that no one really goes and supervises where the money's going. No one can prove it, right? Until lawsuits pop up, right, then go to the history and you bring up everything we did and every action we made. How can the people voice their opinion, do law to this situation? Because the opinion is already set, what you gonna do about it? That's basically being said. So what can the people do as far as, because your lawyer not here, your lawyer not here. So you basically are representing. We want to go by law and change that decision that you're about to make, if we have the opportunity to do so. Because we do pay the money, we're trying to figure out how our money going benefit us there. Where we got people starving, we got all these places where people going, barely we caught, what the fuck? And I'm trying to figure out we're gonna spend the money on that? I'm trying to figure this out. Go get a lawyer here, try to do a class suit, and see like, look, Judge, can you voice your opinion on what we say? Since it's a small population of us, and they got big money, hold up, even mayor. Is, 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 is these judges manipulated, is it rigged? Is it trumped on? I think he signed every law to be for, there's nowhere for the homeless people to go. You get it? It started, building was shut down, this thing modeled the town, he surely sent a lot of it on the news, right? I'm just saying, I'm going around trying to advocate for the people that can't speak, that's not here. You want me to bring them? Want me to bring them, they lying, bending over, they need mental health. I wonder if they get sick, about get sick, they get sick, we get sick, they get sick. We all gonna get sick, I don't care if you hire or not. I'm trying to figure it out. That's that part, mental health part, the health part. Is it healthy to do this? For everybody mental, everybody mental gonna be one, the mental. We ain't talking that out, everybody mental should be on one page only, right? If it's somewhere else, they gonna have a car crash, and this all the obstruction working, it's going, the mayor over there, something, figure this out. And then I send such and such, then I send that, go out there, go save the light.
Okay.
Where our money going? Our money going there, or our money need to be somewhere, so we come and build, say, oh, we all need this, let's build this. The mental is everywhere, man, you see me, right?
I, I, I appreciate that.
I'm so sorry, I'm sorry.
No, to, I, I, thank you.
I'm pretty sure Doc was saying one.
I appreciate that.
And the mayor over here, Oboka, trying to go to another town. One thing about Obaka, Obaka, Oboka mayor? What she's doing to the cops, and to the people that's working for her? Wow, for the people that working for her, I'm just saying.
I appreciate that.
Just on the budget question, the mayor did text me while we were here. I'll get it out to the membership today, if you signed up today, you got a copy. City council meetings on Wednesday at six o'clock, if you want to voice your opinion there. Fifty-two?
Good afternoon, my name is Rose Barnes.
One, one, one second.
My name is Rose Barnes. I have known you ever since you were a confrarian. I watch you, and many other confrarians work very hard for the Greenville area. Since then, Mayor, things has just went in different directions. First, I'd like to speak on the library. As a library worker in the past, I work at the Perris Stoll Library Branch on Perris Stoll Avenue in Greenville. That branch has been closed for over ten, fifteen years. No replacement. The children from Currywood will have to come all the way from Currywood, which is the Bayonne Line, up to the Greenville Hospital, Greenville Library. Some of them are very young, it's no way these children can travel alone. So many of them do not have the access to our library in their neighborhood. I am pleased today to tell you that one of my busiest, troublesome young lady in that library is a very well-known library lawyer, and she's also have written a book about children. I'm going to the library and asking them to make sure they get that book in every library in Jersey City. We all know that children are our future. When you walk in the Greenville area, you find young children, young men, just standing around doing all sorts of things. No type of anything, no direction of which way they could go. There's a lot of homeless people, jobless people. I, for one, has walked my area many days, I fed many children, I have been fostered over my twelve, thirteen different children as a single mom with three sons of my own. I have known through the courts, and I have been very well-supported by some of the judges. Today, I'm asking you as the mayor of Jersey City, to take some of our tax dollar money and see what we can do to help these homeless, jobless, and just children walking around in the streets. It's no reason why Jersey City, being as beautiful as it is, especially from the Montgomery Avenue all the way to the end of the hike, and... Avenue all the way to the end of the hike, and Greenville area, you look like a garbage pail. As mayor of the city, I'm asking you to stand up to your duty, your mo, your oath, I'm sorry, I'm getting a little old now, not very well, but I'm asking you to stand up to your duty, your oath, to make some preparation to try to reach out to some of these youngsters in the Greenville area. I'm quite sure someone will appreciate it. Number one, we need to get these children off the street. Crime is the root of, I'm sorry, poverty is the roots of crimes. And those that does not have, they gonna try to get one way or the other. So, let's see if we can help someone. I was taught as a young girl living in the South, if you could only reach out and help someone down the road, my mom would say, "There's a day you may fall and someone may be able to help you." That's all I have to say. Good evening and progress, if you didn't mind me.
Fifty-three. Fifty-four. Fifty-four in the back.
Hello, everyone. My name is Louiska Jerez. Hello, Mayor Philip and council people. I tried to speak at the September 11th meeting, but it was too many people, there's a lot of people here today, too, so I waited till the last minute here as well.
Thank you.
I live, thinking, I live in the Marion Pobonia section of Jersey City, and we have a new park renovated in back of the pool, the municipal pool that we just found out about, at least I did. I just moved to this section of Jersey City in 2015. I didn't know anything about a renovation of a park, but we much needed it. I mean, the park was in much need of renovation, but I found out also September 3rd that we're not getting a dog park for some reason. It was left out of the plan or it wasn't even spoken of. And there's a lot of puppies in our section. I babysit one. We have many that have moved into the area, and we have to go far away to Hamilton Park, which is a new renovation, I believe. Van Horst is another one that we visit. Washington, which is over there in Union City, that we have to go to. And I reached out to my councilmen, reached out to you as well via Facebook or wherever I can find our politicians to find out what happened.
Why a dog run?
Or, yes, why we weren't given, you know, included in that renovation. Also, in that area, there's a lot of development going on as well. And it seems that we are being boxed in, and things are being taken away, like we don't have supermarket. And the ones that we do have is like three times what we were paid, we have to go all the way to Walmart to do our grocery shopping or to Aldi's. So, everything seems to be far away. And for the, many of us that have to go shopping in a shopping cart, you know, these sea towns or these local supermarkets are very expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to know, with all this development going on, which I am for, I'm for art, I'm for everything, you know, I leave all the decisions up to our politicians. I don't like coming to these meetings, but when I see an urgency, like, you know, things, little things, a dog park, supermarket, you know, affordable housing, things like that, you know, I think that as, as we grow, you know, in special neighborhoods that we care for and we are living in, we have to start coming to these meetings to find out, you know, what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you very much.
The council went for Ward B's here, and we could have a conversation around the dog run. I don't think that a park renovation that's fairly that far down the road, we can pivot so easily on, and our director of infrastructure is pretty good about the community meetings and engagement, but I might ask her about that, but we could talk about what we're doing over there and find a place at the dog run.
I spoke with the director.
Barka?
Architect, I...
Oh, the architect, it would be, it would be, I'm talking about her boss, Barka Patel.
No, I spoke, it was in, it was in, it was in the, it was in the link.
Brian Weller. So, I'm sure Mira and I could get your contact info, and we could figure it out on where we could facilitate something, okay?
No, thank you so much.
Lincoln Park, which is probably closer than those other parks, have two really great dog runs.
Lincoln, we visit all the time, but it's not that it's a long walk.
It's not that close.
But we already have a park right around the corner.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-four. Fifty-five. Thank you all, thank you.
Okay. I'm not really for this pompadour thing, because we're losing a lot of our neighborhood stores, things that the people that are already here can't afford, because there's not much in Jersey City anymore that we can afford. A lot of people have left, a lot of people have moved out. We have other people that have moved in. There are things that are going on. I don't really see where we benefit from a museum, from art. You gotta have special people to come in to handle these art exhibits. Those people don't live here. Who's paying for that? Are we paying for that? As far as having supermarkets, you are our mayor. You closed, they closed the supermarket that we had. You need to lobby for us, that we get someplace. I go to the store for 60 elderly people, because they can't make it up a hill where I live. They can't get online because they can't do that. Their mind doesn't work that way. I go to the store for 60 people. I don't see where it's, we've been going to Lord's forever. We've lost a lot of our little stores. We just lost three guys, nobody helped them. He lost it because he didn't pay the bill. But that is one of our institutions. We don't have really, I went to these, a couple of these meetings, and I listened to somebody talking about, oh, the landfill, oh, the forks and knives that you give out. Well, first of all, if they did their research, there's a fungus that you could put into, a mushroom that eats the plastic. Talk to your people about that, that'll turn it into biodegradable material. But as, it doesn't seem like it's going to benefit us. It seems like it's taking away more than it's giving us. We need stuff for the people that are already here, not bringing more people, because we have enough. Make the people that live here do what they're supposed to do. You're supposed to lobby for us, it seems like you're lobbying for other stuff. It doesn't seem beneficial. All these huge buildings, fine, great, but enough is enough. Jersey City was a quiet, quaint little place away from New York, where you could go and relax and raise your family. Now the rent, you can't raise your family. Everybody's leaving Jersey City or getting pushed out, more or less, and we feel more as pushed out. When is it going to be for actually the people of Jersey City? And the guy, the little, the little guy that was talking out of his head about the homeless, okay, we can do better about them. We need a mental health situation for that situation. I understand what he was saying. We can't just have buses come in so the homeless can go wash, and then you put them back out on the street. That's not cute either. I don't see anything, you're about to tear down half of the square. The Journal Square was the business and shopping hub. Now people are going to have to go further out to take their kids shopping, because they're not going to be able to go right here in this particular area. Everybody doesn't want to go to Target. Target doesn't have something for everyone. This was a hometown little area, and it doesn't seem like it's that anymore. And it doesn't seem like there's nobody, mayor, that is lobbying for us. I am all great for expansion, but proper expansion for proper people, for the demographic that is here. Make it for everyone, not a particular demographic here and there, and we picking spots to do stuff in. It doesn't seem fair. Here you go.
Fifty-five.
No answers, huh?
Fifty-six. Did you want to address, I'm sorry, I skipped that, that was my fault.
I, I, I think that this is a community asset for Jersey City. I think we've spoken about that, and I hear your point and your frustration, so I didn't want to, I, I didn't want to reiterate the same thing with regards to that. I think your, your point was bigger than this specific project. Your point was about affordability, and those are real conversations, and...
You're taking away more than you're giving us.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we're...
If you want to see Picasso, you want to go global. We can go global on the phone, everybody has one. I bought a Picasso from Target, it's in my house.
Good deal.
But we got it in the house, though!
Good deal. Hold on to that.
Jersey City don't want to go to global.
Okay.
Fifty-five. Fifty-six?
Yeah, I am 55.
Do it again, do it back, do it back!
Round two. We're gonna run it back, all 58 speakers got to do it.
They not here, good.
I'm sorry, fifty-six. Fifty-seven, does anyone else have a number? Fifty-eight?
Here we go.
All right, just want to give a big round of applause to Hudson County Community College Roses.
And I just want to say thank you to the 30 or so people that stayed for four and a half hours.
Now buy us lunch!
And in particular, I wanted to say thank you to the two council people that stayed the duration, Rich Bojiano and Mira Prinieri, listening to everybody.
Just a couple announcements, on October 22nd, we're gonna have a night meeting. The board of candidates are gonna come for a forum to join us. And then, as you see, we have live the conversation at JSQCA, sign up on jsqca.com, and we're in a moment, thanks.